Okay, we're rolling.
Welcome everyone to the April 6th, 2021 regular meeting of the Mill Creek City Council. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. How about Councilmember Steckler lead us tonight?
Because I laughed at you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Naomi, roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor Holtzclaw.
Here.
Mayor Protem Vanel. Councilmember Bond. Councilmember Cavallari.
Here.
Councilmember Steckler.
Here.
Councilmember Brials.
Here.
Councilmember Morgan.
You're here.
The mayor, Protem, previously notified us that she'd be on vacation this week, so can we have a motion to excuse?
Motion to excuse Mayor Protem Vignelle.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Any abstentions? The motion passes six nothing. We will begin with audience communication. Would anyone like to speak to the council tonight? Wave your hand, put up your yellow or whatever color you have your hand or speak up. Go in once, twice. You'll have another opportunity at the end of the meeting tonight. Rolling right along. We're going to move into presentations and this is an item that we started last year. I think we had the first one in October to give the council and the public an update on how we're doing with the legal fees for the city. So I'm going to turn it over to Michael and our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Just by way of a brief introduction, our city attorney is going to present data in a way that's very similar to the way we presented last July. And what's new is our outlining of some progress we've made and the steps we've taken to continue to work to drive down legal fees and legal costs. So without further delay, I would ask our city attorney, Grant Degginger, to begin the presentation.
And unmute me here. Naomi, am I going to be able to share my screen?
Yes.
Okay.
Your mic is muted, Naomi.
I'm sorry. Yes, you can share your screen. You're a co-host. If you need help, I have a backup.
Well, let me just find the right presentation. That might be good. Are you seeing that? No, you're not seeing that. So. Are you seeing it now?
Not yet. Do you want me to share, Grant?
Well, let me, since I've got a couple of these, it would be good to get this working.
Okay.
So. I can.
Lower right button says share screen.
Yeah, I thought they had it on there. Seems like I've lost it.
Sometimes you have to hover your mouse over the bottom for it to pop up.
There we go. Okay.
Nice.
Are we there now?
No.
We're not. Okay.
Sometimes there's a delay. There we go.
There you go, Grant.
Thank you. Sorry for the delay, everybody. I apologize. Let me make this bigger. Okay, can we see this now?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, thank you very much. As the city manager mentioned, this is our second presentation about what we're doing with respect to where we are with the city's legal costs. And I wanted to start off with this slide for a number of the council members. This will look familiar, but I thought for the benefit of council members Brials and Morgan, who were not with us in the last presentation, it might be useful to just provide some context for what are the various legal needs that the city has and how are they, how are they met? We've described them previously as having essentially three buckets of legal needs. The first is ongoing needs, things that happen pretty regularly. Obviously, public records is one that we'll talk about, governance and compliance. The daily and weekly work that we provide advice to city departments and also assist in preparing ordinances and resolutions for the council meetings and also reviewing a number of contracts for public works and interlocal agreements and things like that. Then we have items that are more periodic in nature. Real estate transactions like the purchase of the, of the the Dobson Remillard Church property that occurred last year. We, on the city, has franchises, including franchises with cable vendors and with waste management and other things. So those are more periodic needs. More recently, there's work that we provide with respect to labor negotiations and then also special projects, things like providing some assistance in the working on the governance manual or providing some support for the DRCC process that you've all started with, but will be ongoing for some period of time. And then finally, there's litigation. The city is periodically involved in litigation. There can be claims against the city for negligence. It could be a slip and fall from a, from a tree in a right of way. It can be employment claims. It can be construction related claims and various claims involving our representative employees. So that gives some context to the various things that happen. Also, the city has criminal prosecution and indigent defense responsibilities are ongoing as well, which we'll talk about a little bit later today as well. We were asked to take a look at, you know, a period of time from kind of where we left off last time with our last presentation. So we were looking at what the expenses have been from June 1, 2020 to the end of February, which was the time period that we could most recently get data. And what this slide shows is the areas of what legal expense have been for the non-defense, non-indigent defense work, non-prosecution work. So as you can see, there's a pie chart and the largest piece of the pie in this period was for employment matters and public records issues. There's also been a unfair labor practice charge that has involved litigation and administrative proceedings. And then about 16% of the costs have been associated with public works and city attorney work, the kinds of things I spoke about a few minutes ago. Reviewing contracts, assisting in preparing ordinances and resolutions and assisting with routine consultation with staff and departments. Also, there's been some labor negotiations. We had a little bit of construction work primarily related to some changes, well, to the Seattle Hill Road project and also some renegotiation of some professional services agreements that involve construction and also a review of plans. So that gives you a sense of what, you know, what the mix of work has been and where those, where those costs have been incurred. As we've talked about in the last fall, but also now, one of the bigger drivers has been public records and we've been working very hard to address that. So I wanted to provide some information on the scale and the amount of requests that are had and how they've been addressed and how, what we've done to address some of the costs related to public records requests. During this period of time from July through the end of last month, we were, the city had received 702 public records requests. 702, that's about 78 per month. The, of those, all that 21 have been, have been responded to and cleared. There's a few that are remaining and are fairly complex. We'll talk about that in a minute. As we talked about earlier, the public records was driving, was a significant driver in costs last, over the last year and a half, and a lot of efforts been made to try to address those costs. What this slide shows is by month what those costs were. And as you can see, this sort of crescendoed at the, at the high end in the fall of last year. And since then, we've undertaken some measures to reduce those costs in a variety of ways. One, by improving efficiency. One, reducing costs charged to the city for those services. And also working to, to move record requests through as much as possible with city forces. In fact, here's a good example of that. If you look at the public records requests that we received, the city received, the ones in green are the ones that we have, that city staff was able to handle on their, handle independently. And the ones in blue, these numbers are the ones that are, that required necessitated some assistance from outside counsel.
Right, can I jump in for a sec?
Sure.
Are we also tracking financially the amount of funds that are recouped? Or costs related to public disclosure requests?
We, we are not, I don't believe we are right now. In fact, one of the, one of the items that we'll talk about in a few minutes is we have a new public records policy that we have been working on that will involve efforts to recoup some of those costs, but also to, they need, we need to have a lot of work that has been done to lay that out and get that ready and to address how we might go about recouping costs.
If I might, if I might supplement Grant's answer. Councilman Cavallari, what we learned was that when fees were charged for recouping it was not done in any way that was consistent. Nor was it in accordance with Washington law. One of the primary requirements was that the city's past public records ordinance simply never had a public hearing on it. And so there's some question as to whether we could even assess the fees that were charged. So the concern we have is that in discovering another area in which we were hopefully woefully out of compliance, we have slowed down working with the Public Records Committee, which includes our city attorney, our city clerk, our finance director and our police chief. We are putting together a policy that'll be brand new. We're going to be coming to council and once we learn that we're all on the same track, we will have a public hearing so that when we implement the ordinance, we will be able to uniformly charge the same fees regardless of the requester. That wasn't happening and that's, there's also another potential litigation risk, which I'll talk a little bit more about later on in the presentation.
All right, thank you.
Grant? Yes. 702 over seven months by my poor math, that's like just over two and a half a day. Would you say that is a normal amount? An abnormal amount for a city or particularly a city of our size? I would, if I could answer it this way, Mayor, anecdotally, I've, I've done some checking and it would appear that that number is higher than what is typically experienced by cities of this size. Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
As long, yeah, as long as we're taking questions. Do we have any trend information at all? Any historical information? Is that up or down from last year, two years? I'm just curious about which way this is going.
Well, the, the, is this slideshow, this is as far back as we went. It's, it was fairly high in, in 2020 for the year. But we just, we were asked to take a look at this last six months as much as we could and this is what we got. I can certainly look and see if we have any data that goes back farther. Councilmember Steckler, if you'd like me to follow up with you on that.
I'd like to know how we're trending, if we're still trending up or if we're trending way down from what has been, 2020 was a historic, was an abnormal year. It was very high. We all know that. But what has been the norm in the past, 2019, for example? What, what were we experiencing when the numbers were a lot lower?
I'll look and see if we can, if we have numbers on that and I'll work with the city clerk to see if there's some additional.
Be great, thank you.
We can provide. Okay, thank you, council member. Any other questions before we continue? All right, I'm just drilling down a little bit further in terms of the, the requests. I wanted to provide some information on the requests that were, that required legal review and just give you some, some sense of where the requests come from and how they work. We had a small number that were from current or former employees of the city. We had some from the local Mill Creek media, not a big surprise. And we had some from other media and then from other requesters that were affiliated with the other organizations or not affiliated at all. But that gives you a sense of sort of where the more complex requests come from. Okay, I think we did talk about, you know, one of the areas where we're trending, is trending downward in terms of the costs for the last four or so months, four or five months. And then in terms of total costs, when we look at the total costs for legal services for the city, we had the outside council services, prosecutor services and indigent defense. We were, we, this is how we ended the 2020, 21, 2020 budget year, 1920 biennium and how we're, where we stand thus far in the current biennium that started January 1st. What were some of the drivers or reasons we had higher, you know, higher needs for legal services in 2020 and early 21? It's mainly 2020. Obviously, COVID-19 created some unique questions and issues that needed legal assistance and kind of figuring out how we pivoted from operating in our, our pre-pandemic mode to operating remotely and the implications for employees and for the, the public as well. Obviously, then in July, there was a reorganization and a grievance over layoffs. There's been an unfair labor practice issue that has been defended and has involved litigation mediation and, and motion practice. Also, there was assistance in the transitioning of a number of major department leadership positions. We also received a large number, a significant number of complex public records requests. And by that, what I mean is requests that involve information that contains potentially privileged information or personnel information that is subject, that are subject to exemptions under the Public Records Act. Those are the kinds of requests that require review by outside counsel and in order to protect the rights of either employees or others or attorney-client communications. We also worked in resolving some construction claim involving delays and some, and some COVID-19 impacts. That was Seattle Hill Road. And, and we also defended a public records lawsuit. So those were some of the things that impacted costs. In terms of trends, we were trying to, this is a slide that we can continue to build out over the years. We provide additional updates. But we were comparing costs incurred in 2021 versus where we are in 2022. And the good news is for the first two months of 2022, we've been quite a bit below what our costs were in 2021. The delta there is a net savings of totaling about $51,000 year over year. So.
The, I believe it's 2020 comparing with the current 2021. We're about 100,000.
Correct. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Sorry, I just. So we're down by 100,000 compared to the same period last year.
And how are we, how are we addressing those, those, those costs and how are we beginning to experience some of the savings? Well, one of the things we just talked about earlier is working on reforming our public records policy. You know, we've scheduled training for staff so that we can continue to have more of that work done with city staff resources rather than outside resources. We were able to get the first public records lawsuit dismissed in the city's favor and we also were able to get one consolidated with unemployment lawsuits so that those costs were being covered by the risk pool rather than than direct costs outside outlays by the city. You now have assure as your human resources consulting firm on board, which should pass some of those, provide some savings as well. And then also the city has hired a labor relations consultant to assist in the collective bargaining efforts with the two represented organizations, the Police Officers Guild and with AFSCME. So these are all efforts to drop, bend the cost curve, bring it, bring the cost down. And it appears to be appears to be working. So with that, let me take any other questions that the council may have.
I have, I have two questions. In slide number 10, we don't show the March numbers, but in other slides, we do show March numbers for legal fees. Where are we in March for 2021?
Yeah, and the reason is the March just closed out last week and I just, I don't have the numbers yet.
But we did have them in other places, I saw.
Well, we had them in one place and that was on the public records requests.
Because, okay, yeah. Can you go, then my second question was on your first slide, if you could go back to that one?
Sure.
Yeah, that one. I beg your pardon, not that one. The next one. That one. As I was going through these and looking at any question, take the public records out, 26%. Then the other legal fees that had something to do with employment or labor, that's about 54.5% of our legal expenses. June 1 through February 28th. So that seems to me to be extremely high for legal costs. That 54 cents out of every dollar goes to legal, of legal costs go to some type of employment or labor issue. But that may be the norm in cities. I don't know. Is there a way that we could find out what the percentage, what is a normal percentage of legal cost allocation by the employment and labor side of the business? In other words, typically cities spend 50% of their legal expenses on employment issues. Typically, they spend 20%. I'd just be curious as to what that is because to me, for seen.
I understand your question. I, I don't know immediately where we can get that data, but we can look and see if there is such data available.
Could maybe just even make a couple of phone calls. I mean, it's not that proprietary if we're asking for percentage.
It's not. It's only whether other organizations are tracking the cost in the same way, but we can certainly ask.
All right. The other question I would have then is of the 54% that was spent on legal and employment, probably on labor and employment. Could we look at those and see if those, those costs that they need to be handled by? In some cases, they do, by a lawyer, by a legal issue. And in some cases, can those questions be handled somebody, by somebody in the HR field? So we don't have to go to legal to get those questions and that work done, it could be done over on the HR function. Is that something we could look at?
Yeah, I think Mr. Caravino might be able to talk about that and the role with assure.
If, if I might, not only are we looking at it, Councilman Steckler, but we're practicing it. What I can tell you is that with regard to the general employment related matters that we do turn to our legal counsel for, we've been very circumspect. We've been monitoring these fees as closely, if not closer than, than counsel, because we know how important it is for us to conserve the funds. What we're exploring currently with our HR consultant is of the general employment matters that we've worked with the legal counsel on, for example, if an FMLA matter were to come up, there are garden variety FMLAs. And then there are FMLAs that are related to a higher risk of litigation that would still, in this scenario, have us consulting with our legal counsel while also expecting the consultant to do the heavier burden of carrying it. So that where we're able to, we are. As we continue to learn the capacities of our new HR consultant, they handle matters that come very close to that line of where legal advice may be indicated. There's been a few instances already where I've said, well, let's check with our employment council because of A, B, C, or D. And so there's still some overlap, but the goal is for it to trend down in that general employment category while we increasingly rely on, on assure for the general employment non-legal direction and on those areas where it's more appropriate.
Good news.
Can I jump in for a sec, Michael?
Yes. Someone has their hand up, Councilmember.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Morgan. Could you, Grant, could you clarify? I mean, maybe I missed it. Is any, any of these percentages reflect litigation? Trying to understand, I mean, we're talking about 54%, but trying to understand of that 54%, how much is litigation that wouldn't be outsourced to assure? And how much is truly work that could be done by assure rather than by an attorney? So Mayor, the answer is certainly the labor, excuse me, the unfair labor practice charge is, has a lot of litigation and it's primarily litigation. Also, there is, I believe, some litigation in the general employment costs during that period of time, the exact percentage of which I don't know the answer to, but I believe there is some in there. Okay. Councilmember Morgan, then Councilmember Cavallari.
I'll go ahead and defer my time to Councilmember Cavallari if it has to do with this slide because mine's on a different slide.
No, it, it doesn't, Councilmember Morgan, but I just, I just want to point something out. We, I want to make sure that sometimes when we talk about this stuff with legal fees, I, I don't think everybody maybe fully understands. I'm not saying just the council or the public, but the nuances to a public disclosure request and the misconceptions therein because there are, there is so much that goes into it to redacting information. As legal review, attorney review, protected information, medical information. So an HR, while they might surely help with some of the heavy lifting, most of this stuff, and I think Grant and Michael will probably attest to it, it simply needs legal review and it's billable hours. We, we can't get around it. This is the legislature that has put these rules in place for us. And, and I know it's, it's not the best use of taxpayer dollars, but we didn't create the problem. We're trying to operate within it. So when we try to micromanage costs, I think it's, it's fair to say legal comes with everything really when it comes to public disclosure requests and protect, making sure that we're protecting information that needs to be protected. Thanks.
Councilmember Morgan.
All right, thank you. What, the question I had had to do with the unanticipated legal fees specifically due to COVID-related functions. Since the stimulus package was just approved and we'll be funneling money into local governments to offset some of these COVID expenses, do we anticipate being able to recoup some of these legal fees with that stimulus money?
That's an excellent question. I'm, I'm wondering if the city manager might have some thoughts on that. I have not looked into that piece of it. We know that there's a certain amount of dollars that are likely to come the city's way sometime this year. We're not exactly sure when. But perhaps the finance director or the city manager could.
Yeah, I can, I can answer. It's, it's an excellent question, Councilman Morgan. We are tracking of the times where I've reached out to our employment council on COVID-related matters. I just spoke with our city attorney about COVID-related matters earlier today. And the goal would be to recoup those where the, the, the new guidelines don't otherwise preclude us. Right now, it's looking, I'm hearing from our finance director that the new guidelines specifically reference the old guidelines. So we may have an opportunity to do so.
Okay, fantastic.
We're tracking.
Councilmember Cavallari, his hand is not re-raised because he's not in his chair. Okay, any other questions? Anything further on this, Grant or Michael? Vince, did you have another question or is your hand still raised from earlier?
My mistake, Mayor. Yeah, I'll lower it.
Thanks.
That concludes the presentation, Mayor.
Thank you, Grant. Thank you, Michael. And again, I think we're going to endeavor to do this quarterly to keep everyone abreast of what's going on and how we are working to, or how the city manager and city attorney are working to keep these costs contained. I don't have my agenda up on my iPad. I believe we're moving on now to old business and the proposed ordinance to deal with Blake decision.
Yes, we are. Mayor, the ordinance criminalizing possession of controlled substance without prescription, that's item D. And again, city attorney Grant Degginger, I know has been working. And again, City Attorney Grant Degenger, I know has been working with our prosecutor who's also joined this evening. You'll see what is, not what we typically do is present redlined work, but this is still a work in progress. We are hoping that we're going to have something ready for a vote for our following council meeting. And I'm also tracking that Mayor Pro Tem Vigno indicated that she would not be in attendance tonight, but wanted to have an opportunity to participate. And nonetheless, we, we hustled in getting as much as we could done. And so I want to turn the floor over to first to our city attorney and then the chief young in our prosecutor, Krebs. Go ahead, Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Caravino. What we did was, following the introduction of this topic by Councilmember Cavalieri, we we did a review of the Marysville ordinance. We talked to the city attorney of Marysville and we then drafted a, an ordinance similar to the, what Marysville did, but we wanted to make sure it, it is consistent with how we have organized the criminal code portion of our, of our municipal code, which is section 9.04. And in doing that, I wanted to be sure that we were addressing not only the, the issue that is front and center in the Blake case, which was the state Supreme Court ruling that it was essentially a strict liability case because there was not a requirement to prove, to prove that the defendant knowingly possessed the prohibited narcotics or X amounts of marijuana. And the question was, how do we introduce that into our code? And also, how do we deal with marijuana? Because marijuana is slightly different, you know, handled slightly differently in the RCWs and in our code. So what I've done is draft an ordinance, draft an ordinance and then sought the input from our prosecutor Chad Krebs, who could probably do a better job than me in explaining what we're trying to accomplish in terms of adding the knowing element in, and also how we deal with that in, in terms of the marijuana offenses. So if I could, I'd love to turn to Chad and ask him to walk through that part of the statutory structure with the council.
Chad, as you get started, could you just clarify the baseline for everyone? Because I get confused about this. As a result of the Supreme Court's decision, am I correct that there is no state statute right now governing possession of drugs?
So there's no state statute for a simple possession of a controlled substance. If there's possession with intent, or if you're manufacturing, then there's different drugs or different crimes that would address that. But simple possession of, you could call it personal use levels of, of a controlled substance is currently not criminalized.
Okay. So that's, that was the effect of this Blake decision?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So it's a bit of an overview. I think you all either have or have access to the proposed ordinance and the proposed language. Subsection one of the new section. Most of it as a whole is similar to, to what Marysville has already done. Just so you know, we're not trying to recreate the wheel or start from whole cloth here. But subsection one is almost verbatim what had existed in 6954013, which was the RCW relating to simple possession. What Marysville did and what this would do, should you approve it, would simply add the word knowing to the 1234, was that the sixth word of the sentence? It's unlawful for any person to knowingly possess a controlled substance. So we all believe that that should kind of right the, or cure the ills of what the Supreme Court identified in the currently enacted statute under the RCW. And sub two, which would be the new penalty for that local ordinance violation, making a violation, a gross misdemeanor, which would be punishable, but up to 360, 40 days in jail and up to a $5,000 fine. Those are the maximums. Definitely not something that you would be expecting someone to be seeing, but just classifies it as a gross misdemeanor. The blue language, which is something that Marysville did not have, that I had suggested we add. Technically marijuana is still a controlled substance under the law. So it's treated criminally, it's treated the same as heroin, same as methamphetamine in many of the statutes throughout the RCW. So the new blue language, I just inserts, except as provided in RCW 6954014. One of the suggestions I had was to adopt that ordinance into the local code. And that RCW spells out people that are over the age of 21 that possess less than 40 grams of marijuana is a simple misdemeanor. So I was thinking that added language is necessary to conform with the RCW as it relates to a smaller amount of usable marijuana being a simple misdemeanor and larger amounts or other violations of the controlled substance language being a gross misdemeanor. Unless it for some reason qualifies and is charged as a felony, because there's possession with intent to use or intent to distribute. I'm not, not, I'm sorry, not intent to use, but possession with intent to distribute or manufacture.
Hey Chad, can I, can I, when was the last time anybody charged a misdemeanor marijuana charge?
Well, Linwood, I'm sorry, not Linwood. Mill Creek didn't specifically adopt that one, so we don't charge it generally at all in Mill Creek. And I see it from time to time in other jurisdictions, but it's usually because somebody has been warned 8,000 times and, and it's just becoming more of a problem. But honestly, next to never. But it's just something I think that should be adopted, just to make sure that our enforcement framework and, and sanction framework is consistent.
And the only reason I, I say that is because I, I don't want it to conflict with state language, which could potentially harm any legislation or ordinance we bring forward here tonight.
Yeah. And so I think to date, RCW 6954014 hasn't been challenged. And we're just really adopting it as written by the RCW, as written by the state legislature. And then we would just be, by adopting it, it just basically gives the city of Mill Creek the authority to prosecute under it.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah. Sub three A, three B, and three C, we did not talk about really changing any of the language from what some of the other jurisdictions, what Marysville has done. And then in sub E, you'll see some strike through in blue that I suggested we remove from a Mill Creek version, should it be adopted. My concern with that language is that currently under 6954013, that possession of marijuana is, is currently outlawed for people under the age of 21. That particular section of, of 4013 was not affected by the Blake decision. So technically, sub one of the RCW was the only one that the Supreme Court said was unconstitutional. Their portions on marijuana were not affected by that statute, not to mean that there aren't cases in the future where the Supreme Court might, might reach that opinion. But at this point, it's still a valid RCW. And my concern was by adding knowingly possessed to that RCW, we're changing the the conduct which constitutes a crime, we're making it slightly less criminal if it's knowing possession under the local ordinance compared to simple possession of the state ordinance. And my concern was that would be preempted by the Controlled Substances Act, which is where 4013 lives. So my suggestion would be removing the knowingly possess from sub D and just having it basically match what 4013 currently says. And then that's, yeah, that's the, the proposal really in a nutshell. There's quite a bit of back and forth between the chief and Mr. Deginger and myself. So obviously we have time for questions if you guys or gals have any.
Before we do that, just procedurally, what we'd like to do, Mayor, is, is to provide a, to listen to the council's comments tonight, see if there's any other questions and any other clarifications we need to make to the language. We sent out the revisions that were, were, that Chad just discussed earlier today. So we want you to have enough time to review it. We can provide you a strike draft, the strike draft as well as a clean draft. And then ask that you consider it for adoption neck, at your next meeting. Because it's an emergency ordinance, there's emergency provisions, you would need a super majority to pass it. In other words, you would need, instead of four, you need at least five members voting in favor of it.
Before we get to questions, throw a few out there that maybe one of the three of you could answer. Do we know, have any update on the status of what the legislature may or may not be doing? I think we're in the final two and a half to three weeks of the session. And so there were several bills floating around and I haven't heard the status of those. I'd be interested to hear from, and I think others would too, the chief on what he thinks is the need for this, either in the short term or long term. I seem to recall that at the last time we discussed this, a couple of weeks ago, there's reference to 12 possession cases in the past year. So I'm trying to get a handle on if we didn't act in the next week or two, you know, what is the potential impact based on our historic numbers? And I think those are the questions that I had.
I think you may remember the council. If we were to enact this ordinance, it would not have a significant impact on our operations. As of right now, it's really hard to judge what the level of need for this ordinance would be. However, in the interest of ensuring services are provided to members of our community who are experiencing substance abuse, this ordinance would provide our officers with a valuable mechanism to guide those members to available services through the court. At the same time, it will provide our officers with a tool to ensure community safety. We can revisit the impact on what this would do for us as soon as we were able to kind of get an idea. Like I said, from February 25th on, it's just really hard to say how many cases we would have had versus would not have had.
Thank you. Does Grant or Michael, do you have any update on what's happened in Olympia?
A brief one. I know yesterday there was a hearing in the state senate on a bill that I think it's Senator Dingra's bill. She was, I think she's the chair of the committee that would adopt a program that would be focused on addressing in a more broader and holistic context, the issues of addiction and treatment. That there, there are several bills that move that direction, but I think this is the first bill that had a hearing. There is a, there's some support, there is support for it. I don't know if there's enough to get it through in these late stages of the, of the session. There's also a, a fairly significant cost associated with that. I've heard 40 to 50 million dollars. In, so it's a question of whether the, the legislature has the time in the, in the, and the fiscal will as well to, to adopt something like that, you know, at this stage of the, of the current session. I don't know if anybody else, if whether the chief or Chad, you've heard any other developments, but that's the latest I heard as of yesterday.
I, I do know that obviously it continues to get press coverage. So there's, there's definitely some, some interest in what, what happens one way or the other. I know Representative Lovick has, has spoken with this council and other councils in his district and expressed as some, I think some, some hope and some, I guess he maybe not an expectation, but an inkling, a strong inkling that the legislature would likely do something this, this session. But still the bills that are before the legislature are still in kind of early stages of, of negotiation and they haven't, you know, passed their respective houses and gone over for consideration yet. So still got a long way to go on the state side of things.
Okay, thank you. Before I open up to questions, just a reminder, we'll be getting to this in the governor's manual update, but we are in questioning right now. We're not in discussion until there's a motion on the table. So we're still in the part of the proceeding where we're taking questions for staff. Councilmember Cavalieri.
Thank you, Mayor. And I do have questions, but I want to make a couple of comments at a time. Oh, that was kind of a preemptive strike on your part, but.
Obviously didn't work.
As I proposed a couple of weeks ago, this ordinance, well, first let me go back to Chad. I might want to move away from the marijuana piece for now or take it at a later date. I think it has a potential to muddy the waters or create confusion of what we're trying to do here within our city. So the whole idea of this ordinance was kind of a stopgap measure right now for what we believe is the drug pandemic in our city and the state Supreme Court's ridiculous ruling. So I touched on this a couple of weeks ago when I introduced it. That as lawmakers in our community, we have a duty and moral responsibility to act when, when others won't or cannot or will not. I think everyone understands my personal and professional feelings on state v. Blake. I think the decision was reckless with judicial overreach, so it, it puts the ball in our court. So want to make a couple of quick points and reiterate something I said last week that everyone in this meeting is, I'm sure has heard of fentanyl and the impactful role it has on this drug pandemic in our, in our communities. It's a synthetic opioid. It's addictive. It's much more catastrophic to the user, to the community than just normal heroin before. And it's going to get worse. And I, and I have something I want to show you. Naomi, can you scare, share your screen, please? So the officer alert you see here from the Drug Enforcement Agency is, it's pretty much the new kid on the block. This is called carfentanil. The drug manufacturers, the drug cartels, the drug dealers, and even the users, they're going to continue evolve, no matter what we do legislatively, legislatively. So it's up to us to kind of keep our game up to date. Carfentanil is the new and powerful opiate. And, and the reason I'm using this to draw a comparison to simple possession is very important. This stuff is used as a large mammal tranquilizer or sedative or, or pain reducer for like elephants. It's not illegal in China. It's not illegal in Mexico. So it's flooding here into America. Now this stuff is so potent, it is 10,000 times more potent than morphine, 100 times more potent than pharmaceutical grade fentanyl. And if you can see that picture in the lower right, there's a penny there with Abe Lincoln's head on it and a little speck to the right of it. That's a lethal dose. Thank you, Naomi. My colleagues and citizens, that is a legal dose of carfentanil. You need only a matchstick to kill everybody in this Zoom meeting. That's how powerful this stuff is. So when we try to quantify or have the discussion, how much should somebody carry and how much is simple possession? It's a lot more than that. So the next carfentanil is out there beyond this. I'm, I'm quite sure. The dealers, the makers, they're looking for that next, next addictive dynamo to keep their customers coming back. So it's up to us as legislators to keep them on their toes, number one, and protect our community. And that right there, that picture, you tell me what, and I'm going to steal the Supreme Court's words. That's not innocent conduct right there. That's lethal conduct.
Okay, thank you. Let's keep it to questions, please. And then if you'd like to make a motion, we'll entertain a motion and have discussion. I think I saw Councilmember Bryle's hand up next, followed by Councilmember Morgan.
Yeah, thank you, Grant and Chad, Prosecutor Krebs and City Attorney DeGinger. DeGinger or DeGinger?
Deginger.
That, I didn't get it at all. Sorry. So I see we're reviewing our jail contract costs as well tonight. What costs are involved in implementing this ordinance? Perspective, you had mentioned historical data that I think last year we'd had 12 people, 12 cases, right? So that would be somewhat indicative of a standard year?
Yeah. And, and I think those numbers came from one of the chief's reports.
Yeah, and, and I think those numbers came from one of the chief's reports. Um, I'm not sure if those were cases, uh, if those were bookings or if those were, uh, cases referred. Chief, do you know, are those charged cases by the county prosecutor?
One second, I'm, I'm looking up the numbers just to make sure I give you the right ones.
Not everybody that's charged is booked, just right for. Sure. But a booking is ninety six dollars and then it's like sixty six a day. Misdemeanor person's probably going to spend five days in jail, maybe less. Then they'll likely be bailed out or released on their own recognizance to go to trial. It probably won't show up.
Right. Uh, and I know at least when it relates to something similar, which is a, a case we do charge, like drug paraphernalia, uh, oftentimes those individuals are not booked at the time of arrest, or at least on the misdemeanor side of things. They're typically issued a citation to appear out of custody for court. Hopefully they appear out of custody and avoid warrants. Um, if they have a pretty good track record of coming to court, they're likely not looking at jail time, they're looking at, at probation and, and potentially services. Um, you know, if jail, uh, does happen, it would be either A, because somebody has, uh, built up quite a tri- rec- tra- track record in the community, um, where jail becomes kind of a necessary deterrent. Uh, or it's a situation where someone has failed to appear repeatedly, uh, and the court has, uh, worn out, uh, any patience for the individual and issues a warrant or sets bail when they come back into jail. But I think, you know, five days typically is about the most you're going to see on, um, a lot of these types of, of offenses, um, unless someone is on probation and is really, struggling on probation and, and struggling to the point that they're like offending the court with their actions. Um, but yeah, so there's a booking fee and a jail fee, uh, those I think will be increasing in 2022. I think the chief will get to that here in a little bit, but, uh, overall costs besides jail. Um, I don't think there's a cost for the testing. I know that was one of the questions we had last time around. I reached out to, uh, the, um, doctor who runs the Marysville crime lab for the state patrol, and she indicates that she does not charge the state, not she, but the process does not charge the state for testing or for testimony. Um, obviously that's their decision and a, and a legislative decision, but there, um, currently is not a, a charge there. That might change going forward if the numbers increase.
Okay.
Well, you, usually Benjamin, uh, Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Usually when a person is contacted and charged with a possession charge, there's other charges involved. Cause it's, it's unlikely that the police would go up and just make a social contact, contact, and then find some drugs in their pocket or the whatever. So they're arrested for the shoplifting or the other crimes. Search incident to arrest, small amounts of drugs are found and those charges are tacked on. So it's usually more complicated, very rarely just a simple drug possession charge.
Okay, um, so, uh, that's, that's another question that I have is, uh, so how do the costs work with booking jail and court fees? When someone is arrested for a gross misdemeanor, which we're looking at here from the city as compared to a class C felony from the state? Are we paying either way if MCPD does the arrest? Or does the state pay for a felony?
If they're being held on our case, we pay for it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure how the jail works. I'll defer to the, the chief as to that issue. But in terms of most, many costs, it's, it's a state prosecution, so the state bears many of the costs. If it's a, a municipal prosecution for a simple or gross misdemeanor, then some of those costs would, would, uh, come back. But the numbers I think were relatively low in terms of the possible cases.
Okay.
Right, and as Prosecutor Krebs stated, um, we typically don't take in too many. So when you look at the number of misdemeanor cases we had this year, we only had one between January 1st and February 24th. And we had three felony cases during that same time period. And last year we had thirteen alone, eight felony and five misdemeanor respectively. Um, so with that being said, we're not anticipating the cost being too much. But as Prosecutor Krebs said, uh, if it's a gross misdemeanor case, it'll be handled at the municipal level. Uh, county would be handled by the county prosecution.
Uh, Councilmember Morgan, followed by Councilmember Steckler, your questions, please.
All right, uh, thank you all for all your comments and presentation. Uh, Prosecutor Krebs, uh, you recently mentioned your, the last thing you just said, um, that a lot of the prosecutorial side of it isn't necessarily to seek jail time. What would you say is the percentage of those that get, uh, time served or community service as opposed to just being thrown in jail?
I would say for the most part, kind of one of the goals with, um, kind of the philosophy of, of misdemeanor prosecution is oftentimes trying to, uh, to get involved in someone's life before they rise to the level of committing felonies. So misdemeanor prosecution is very, um, it's not as punitive as felony prosecution is where you're trying to, you know, someone has done something the legislature considers a felony, so you, you need to, you know, hold them accountable and punish them for that. There's a lot more of, um, kind of like, uh, uh, reformation, I guess. Um, getting, you know, getting people connected with services, trying to, um, get them back on track, so to speak, in terms of committing crimes and, and a lot of those kind of community. Um, uh, kind of the, the crimes that frustrate the community, the shopliftings and the, the disorderly conducts and the, the, the criminal trespasses. Um, you're trying to get those people into services versus jail is definitely one of, you know, our office's goals and oftentimes the district court's goals as well. So, um, we oftentimes, you know, seek alternatives, even if someone has been convicted of a crime, crime, you know, see if home monitoring is an option or if community service is an option. I've been steering away from community service, obviously with COVID, um, trying to not encourage people to be out and about in the community when, um, you know, with everything that's going on. But generally speaking, I don't have a percentage, um, but I know jail is definitely not the, the primary thrust of the prosecution, at least on, on a misdemeanor level with someone with limited history.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Steckler.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I wanted to clarify just a couple of facts, just to make sure I have it correct. So for what I understand from you, Chief, uh, Young, uh, for the next two or three weeks, historically, we're looking at a potential of one case coming up between now and say, in the end of the month, during the month of January. I mean, during this, this, uh, period of time, but 12 cases a month and averages out maybe one a month. Um, I also understand from you, Mayor, that the state legislature uh, has said that they are working on making a, uh, decision on how to handle this, uh, 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 what, what they want to decide is the state criteria. And they have to make a decision in the next three weeks or they're not going to have a decision. So I'm a little confused as to why we would want to make a decision in the next week or two weeks, uh, why wouldn't we want to wait to see what the state legislature decides? Rather than make a decision, then find out what the state wants to do and then do we want to revise our decision? It just seems kind of, I, I, I understand why we're having this discussion, but it seems to me from the facts I'm hearing that the timeline should be, we, we've got a period of just two or three more weeks till the state legislature has to make a decision or doesn't make a decision. If they do, that could help us decide which way we want to go. If they don't make, if they don't make a decision that we, you know, we want to have something for our city to operate under. But I don't think making a decision before and then running the risk of having to change it again really uh, makes a lot of sense to me. I'm, so I'm, I'm a little confused by why, why would we want to do that prior to the state legislature when it's so imminent?
Just to clarify, we're not having discussion right now. We're asking questions. We can have discussion when someone wants to.
That was my question, my question, why are we doing this?
I understand. Um, before I get to Councilmember Cavalry for a second, by the apple with questions, I want to give Mark an opportunity if he had any questions. No, okay, Councilmember Cavalry, questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, well, to the point of the question. Um, waiting for the state, I mean, I, I don't really even know.
There's no, there's no, no questions for staff, not questions to another, to councilmembers' discussion.
So, counsel, just allow me a little latitude here.
If you want to put a motion on the table and see if it gets a second, then we can have discussion. That's the parliamentary procedure.
Well, since the ordinance is not ready to be voted on tonight, what, what do you want me to put on the floor, Mayor? I don't understand your question.
There, there is an ordinance, I believe the city attorney said his preference would be, his recommendation would be, we wait a week, but
Right.
the council is free to make any motions they want and see if it gets.
So I don't want to, I don't want to force a motion just because you're giving me a time limit to maybe answer a question or two. Um, I don't think that's fair and I don't, I really don't think that's decorum, honestly.
Well, I'll let the city, uh, advise us on the parliamentary procedure. My understanding is until there's a motion on the table, we can ask questions of staff. If we want to get into a discussion of whether we should do something, there should be a motion put on the table.
Mayor, if I, if I could, I, um, Councilmember Steckler asked a que- uh, posed a, a question. Um, and didn't get an answer to it and love to at least give him a partial answer.
Yes.
Because I think, uh, Councilmember, uh, what you framed is primarily a policy question, uh, for the council to decide. Uh, which is, th- there is an element of whether or not what this, if the legislature acts, will it act in a manner that would, um, uh, that would preempt the cities, uh, the, the actions under this proposed ordinance? And, um, I think Mr. Krebs could talk about that a little bit, but it's difficult to know until they actually act as to whether and to what extent there might be preemption. Could you maybe describe what preemption is, Mr. Krebs, and describe how it might work in this instance?
Sure. Uh, so the idea of preemption, uh, it really comes from, um, was constitutional, so basically obviously some, some things are, uh, some things are state questions, some things become a federal question in terms of constitutional law. In terms of criminal law, it's very similar, the state legislature can create ordinances or create, uh, statutes. Within those statutes, the idea is a local jurisdiction can't uh, decriminalize something that the state says is criminal or can't, uh, punish something less severely than the state says needs to be punished. Uh, so there's lots of questions. It really depends on the details of what the state wants to do or how the state responds in terms of figuring out whether or not a local ordinance has been preempted. But the idea is if the state decides that a certain type of conduct is legal, then the local jurisdictions would be preempted, meaning the local jurisdictions wouldn't have any power to say, uh, anything to the contrary. Uh, I know that's one of the issues right now is they're looking at certain types of legalization. So if that were the decision of the legislature, then local actions could very well be, uh, preempted.
Chad, I'm sorry, go ahead, Grant.
I was just going to say, just to, to sum that up, um, Councilmember Steckler, s- it is possible that the state could act in a way that would, if this, if the city acts, uh, this week or next, uh, to adopt, uh, what we're talking about or something similar to it, it's possible that all or a portion of it could be preempted. We just don't know and won't know until, uh, the state acts or, or, or the state legislature, uh, adjourns without, without acting. I wish I could give you a better answer, but that's the best I can do.
Chad or Grant, can you clarify, I, I recall one of you mentioning two weeks ago that there was a simple bill proposed in Olympia that would do essentially what we are considering, what is in, in front of us in this proposed ordinance? And then there was a se- separate, more comprehensive bill that dealt with, um, uh, some other aspects. I assume when you, the, Chad, you referred to there being concern in Olympia about costs. I assume that's not cost with implementing the simple bill. It's cost with the bigger bill that has the additional items tacked on to it.
The additional resources for, um, diversion and treatment, correct?
Okay. And so do we know, and we don't know the status of the, is, if the simple bill is still moving forward?
I do not believe it's had a hearing yet.
Yeah, the simple bill is, uh, I think it's House Bill fourteen ninety-nine, that was introduced the morning after, uh, the Blake decision. Uh, it was an emergency, uh, bill, which was, I guess it was admitted, you know, they allowed it to be filed, but it, uh, has just sat in committee and it hasn't been assigned to any subcommittees for negotiations. So I think that one is likely not going to move forward this year.
Councilmember Vince, is your hand still up? Do you have any questions?
I did. Hey, Prosecutor Krebs, do you, would you believe in your experience that law enforcement is, is essentially, like I stated, uh, two weeks ago, the tip of the spear for getting many of these folks, uh, the help they need, the treatment they need? And overall, just keeping the community, um, rid for the most part of, of the peripheral crime that goes along with it?
I think that'd be accurate, yeah. I mean, there's people that are very, you know, proactive social workers that try to get out there in the community, uh, service providers and try to really engage with people where they live and where they, uh, where they are. But for the most part, uh, unfortunately, the individuals that are suffering from uh, a lot of these, uh, substance abuse, uh, issues are committing crimes and they're the ones having regular contact or contact at all, typically with law enforcement. So, you know, those officers are the ones that, um, have those conversations that can start to understand. Unfortunately, they get to know some of these people in the community because they have ongoing contacts and can start to try to, um, I think facilitate, um, not that it's their job. I know there's a lot of issues right now with people talking about law enforcement, wearing social worker hats, but obviously that's where we are kind of right now as a society until other actions are taken. But yeah, I think that law enforcement is definitely leading the charge, so to speak, on, on this issue.
And so when we, when we, I just want to make sure that we're not getting too mired down with, with what it might cost for a jail bed for five days or, or waiting for the state to do, I think that is our responsibility. So I'll talk more about it next week. Thank you for your, uh, questions. The motion is not on the floor because it's not ready yet. So to answer that question too, um, I'll make the motion next week.
Councilmember Morgan, do you have questions?
I did, yes. Um, is it common practice when individuals get arrested with possession with intent to sell or traffic that it gets pled down, at least historically, uh, to felony possession instead or a lesser sentence? And with that not being on the table, would these same people be prosecuted for?
I think we lost Adam.
I'll, uh, I'll start to answer at least, uh, what I understood the question to start out as. Um, it is pretty common for a simple possession charge, which would have been filed uh, by the county prosecutor's office, you know, if it was filed at all, because they do have different internal, um, charging standards um, in place, but people are oftentimes, um, charged with uh, the misdemeanor version of the crime and offered an opportunity to plead at that misdemeanor level. Um, or face the potential of a, of a, uh, I guess a dismissal of the misdemeanor and a refile of the, of the felony. Or on the flip side, they're charged with a felony and offered what they call an expedited felony, which is, uh, the individual pleading guilty to an amended misdemeanor charge. Definitely a common way to resolve those on the county, on the county level. If it was, um, a potential felony filing, that's how they do it.
Great, thanks.
Any further questions? Councilmember Bryles, see your hand up? You unmute, please.
And I'm muted, all right. I did have one last question. Possibly this comes down to between, uh, the city manager and the city attorney. Uh, what work is involved in implementing the ordinance? Like what, what do we have to update? What is, what needs to be done if, you know, if we pass an ordinance? In order to implement?
Well, we will need to just include it into the code. Uh, from my, from the city attorney's perspective, that's what'll, you know, what will be, be necessary. I think the chief may have some additional steps and, and possibly the prosecutor as well.
If I may just add on to that, that's, um, once it's passed, we'd fully expect Chief Young will inform his team and, uh, afford them of the opportunity to consider it as part of their, their. And, uh, afford them of the opportunity to consider it as part of their, their toolbox. Of, um, options when, um, encountering various members of the public. If they're observed to be in possession of, of the substance or an ordinance or probable cause to believe. Um, it's just one more law that's, um. Up until the Supreme Court decision was already in their tool bag and it goes back in the tool bag. Is I would characterize it. Chief Young, are, are there any additional steps, uh, from your standpoint?
Yes, thank you, City Manager. One of the other steps that we would have is we would provide some additional training to our officers. So that they understand exactly how we're going to, uh, implement and use this tool to our advantage. Uh, in conjunction with, say, the possession of drug paraphernalia. Uh, one other point to Councilmember Bond's, uh, earlier statement about the manner in which people are contacted. And, you know, why they would end up facing a criminal charge for possession of controlled substances. There's, in ninety-nine percent of the cases, in my experience, it's always been some other factor that brought us to that location. And during search incident to arrest or whatever, that's when we identified the possession of controlled substance. So again, we're not out there trying to get in people's pockets for, for any other reason. We, we have a reason to already be there and it's just additional crimes that, that we can charge for that. So the, the, the idea being that if we have someone who's committing a residential burglary. And they're in possession of burglary tools and then controlled substance, that we just stack those charges on so that we can make sure that we abate that problem. All in the interest of preserving community safety.
Grant and Chad, my final, oh, I'm sorry, Benjamin, do you have another follow-up?
Just real quick follow-up. In that case, if there's, so. If the, if the state does preempt us in three weeks, uh, would we have to change the training in that case? Would we retrain?
Yes, you adapt.
Okay.
The, the training would still be a valuable piece so that way that, that we're all on the same page with how we're going to apply. Any possession of controlled substance, uh, charge in addition to some of the other charges that we have available to us.
Okay, thank you.
Grant and Chad, the final question I had was if the state does act to criminalize the same behavior. When we bring this back next week, is it possible to add a sunset clause that provides that? We would adopt something if it is passed that would sunset if the state passes legislation that criminalizes the same activity covered by our ordinance?
I think it's a practical matter. Um, if, if the state adopts it, you know, our ordinance is superseded. It is, is, um. It is gonna be superseded by the state anyway, so it's just a, a matter of at some point in time, we'd either. Want to repeal it or we're not gonna use it, that's for sure, because if, if it, if we're preempted from using it by the state action. We can't use that. We have to take it out of our toolbox.
Okay.
Changes in the way law enforcement conducts itself is a regular event. And the law enforcement community is well equipped to adapt. It's not uncommon for the state to say, uh, for instance, your second DUI is mandatory arrest. Under these conditions or, uh, domestic violence is now, used to be discretion, now it's a mandatory booking. And they get the information out to all the officers in a very effective way so that we can immediately adapt to those changes. Cause when that, when those laws pass, they're, they're made effective immediately unless stated otherwise. So we are expected to adapt immediately.
Okay. Any further question? Oh, I see Councilmember Steckler's hand up again.
Yes, I'm going to ask a question. And this is just a question, um, because I'm hearing a lot of comments. That we can, police can, uh, can adapt if we pass a law. And two weeks later, we find out that law has been superseded by the state. That we can, you know, just send out new emails and new notices and change gears and I've heard that. What I have not heard in my question is, why couldn't we just wait two weeks? To see what the state does or doesn't do before we act? What is the reason not to do that? We have possibly one case that might come up. I don't see a mass issue. I'm just curious, why, why not wait the two weeks? Is there something I'm missing? That's my question.
No, I understand. It's a good question.
What if that one case was an overdose that we could have saved?
Think that the question was directed to the staff.
Yeah, um, yeah, again, Councilmember Steckler, I think in large measure, that's a policy decision. Um, from a timing standpoint, you've heard, um, what our frequency is of these. Uh, you've heard also what the concern is about, uh, growing, uh, the, the growing. Um. Issues with, uh, drug activity and the plen- and the plentifulness of drugs in the community. So those are the kind of competing, um, issues, you know, as to whether the state will act or not act. Um. It may be clearer next week, but we don't know for sure. Uh, it's just, at, at some point, it's like, that's a question of whether the council feels it now is the time to act. And if, if some element of it is, um, is, um. Superseded by the state's, um, ultimate decisions and enactments, then we'll, we'll adapt. Otherwise, it certainly is a, you know, there's, there's policy reasons and religion and ones that, that, uh, can be raised as to waiting and seeing. During that period of time and it's really, at the end of the day, up to you as the policymakers to make that call.
Thank you, Grant. And I appreciate that. I also would like to know, what does my chief think? How, you know, what's, what's the chief want? In answer to my question.
Enacting this ordinance would again, give us the, the tools necessary to effectively. Control certain problems within our community and at the same time. Provide the guidance for our community members experiencing substance abuse to be put into some sort of a treatment platform. And that way we can start working on the underlying causes of this as well. Again, we're not out here just to try to put people in jail for violation of a controlled substance ordinance. But we do wanna make sure that we have something available so that we can get someone into that door. So that they're not continuing down that path, because when you start having controlled substance problems. You see other problems that occur to you, which could be burglary, vehicle prowl and on and on and on. And we have a number of complaints, uh, from our community associations right now with regard to drug paraphernalia being abandoned on. Different trails or in, in different parks or whatever. Um, so these kind of things do have a collateral effect i- if we don't address them.
Well, I agree, but the two-week question, chief. Why, why do you feel we shouldn't wait two weeks and act on this now? Or do you feel we should wait? What's your answer?
Again, that, that's more of a policymaker decision. Um, we will be ready to move in any direction that we need to.
Okay, thank you.
I have one more question.
Councilmember Cavallari.
Chief, this one's for you. Do you think strong laws in a community push certain elements out of the city?
Uh, Councilmember, that's a great question. Yes, I have seen that occur in many different municipalities where. Uh, we are able to displace crime and push it into other places. Um, or we are able to abate it entirely through the use of effective laws and ordinances.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, any last questions? Hearing none. Thank you, Grant. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chad. Thank you for the good questions from, uh, council. This will be back to us next week, ready for. Someone to propose a motion and for us to discuss the policy question of whether and how we proceed.
Thanks for the excellent discussion.
Thank you, everybody.
Brad.
Okay, with that, we are now on, I believe, to considering a further extension of the emergency proclamation. Uh, related to COVID, uh, City Manager.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh. Again, City Attorney and myself had a long conversation about this. Uh, so I've, I've actually got two, two aspects of the conversation as it relates to, uh, City Hall. I, I first wanted to talk about it, what I believe is immediate concern to council relating to. The capacity for us to open our council chambers for a public meeting. Um, under the, the governor's current proclamation, twenty twenty-eight dash fourteen. Um, we are at the point where we can open at fifty percent. Provided, uh, we maintain appropriate social distancing and masking in the audience. And we would still require, uh, we would still have the video requirement, uh, so that we would still be in the format. Uh, that we're talking about now for, uh, recordation purposes. In, um. Talking with Director Todd, uh, we did a measure of the room. The capacity estimate on the side of the wall there in the council chambers. Um, is not accurate because it doesn't, uh, include a capacity rating for the appropriate social distancing at six feet apart. So Director Todd, uh, has conducted the measurements. Um, in addition to the council seats where we do have, uh. Partitions erected. We would, uh, have the capacity for four additional staff members to sit at those staff desks. There would be two at each desk, uh, six feet spaced in each row. That'd be a total four. According to, uh, Mike Todd's, uh, measures, we have a, a room for an additional thirteen. Attendees in the council chambers. So that, that adjusted the capacity aspect of it. What we would still need to do is, uh, staff appropriately, uh, for individuals to. Uh, to ensure that those that are coming into the building are wearing a mask. And, uh, we would also, uh, not mandate, but offer, uh, participants coming into chambers. Uh, into City Hall rather, uh, the opportunity to, uh, take their own temperature. Uh, to determine whether, uh, they're running either a fever above or, uh, a body temperature below. Um, the recommended ranges for appropriate screening. Uh, the other aspect this, uh, of this for us as it relates to opening City Hall. Um, we are eager to get the passport office open right away. We still have members of the passport staff, um, who are opting for the vaccine. That have either not had it yet, weren't, weren't able to obtain it yet. Or are, uh, in the process of the first vaccine and are now waiting for their second dosage. Um, if I look at this optimistically, um, we may not be able to open up our passport office until the beginning of May at the earliest. Uh, there is tremendous interest, uh, from the public to, um, have passports. Uh, we believe that, uh, the earlier we're able to open it, the more we're gonna be able to capture the market. We are all very eager to bring in revenue, uh, and I'm also hearing anecdotally. Um, from our staff, uh, that many are still waiting or in the process of obtaining their. The protocols to get the, the vaccination. Uh, the other aspect of this is that in keeping City Hall closed and, and what I'm asking. For council to consider, I know there's strong feelings on this, uh, but I'm asking in extending the emergency proclamation through May fourth. Um, it will enable us to not only afford, uh, staff who are opting for the vaccine to obtain both the first and second. Dose, um, but we will, uh, be able to address. Other matters that right now feel impractical for us to open up, uh, City Hall. On the other hand, if it is the will of council to open the chambers for our next meeting, I believe we can do it. Um, but we will require, uh, folks, if there's gonna be a, a strong demand, we would need, uh, people to register ahead of time. Uh, so that we can administer something on a first come, first served basis to accommodate the maximum capacity. In council chambers. As we all know, there's some meetings where they're heavily attended and there's others where they're not. Um, if this is the will of council, I see an opportunity for us to modify the proclamation. But I would still ask council, uh, to recognize that we are still performing. Uh, the overwhelming majority of services that City Hall offers. Um, whether it's applying for certain permits, pet licenses, um, other renewals. Um, there are only, uh, certain things that we're not able to do right now, uh, inside City Hall. And, uh, we're waiting, uh, to follow guidelines, for example, the recreational program offerings. Um, in the fingerprinting services, in the passport office. All other functions, whether they're being performed by employees remotely or on site. Um, have us open for business already. We are answering the phones daily. A number of us, uh, all of us actually here at City Hall are greeting members of the public at the front door. Um, any stakeholders that need the services of the police department, call. Um, at the front box or call on the number that's on the, the billboard. And, uh, staff and personnel, either at the police department or at City Hall generally are meeting, uh, our stakeholders at the front door. I, I think we're all eager to get back to normal. Uh, but I would also ask us to pay attention to some of the delays and those of us who want the inoculation have not yet had it. And we are still doing the public's business. We're just doing it on an appointment basis or, um, at the front door. And we've also conducted, admittedly, a non-scientific survey. But, um, we have checked all passport offices, um, that are outside of the post office. And we've learned that, uh, there are no passport offices open. And even, uh, the city of Everett, um. All there is not one City Hall that I'm aware of or members of our staff are aware of that are, have yet to open. Uh, but they are doing the types of permit services, uh, clerk services and, and other related work. Uh, to keep the, the business of government running. So if it pleases the council, I'd ask, uh, after questions and comments for a motion to confirm. Uh, the extension of the city manager's emergency proclamation through May fourth of twenty twenty-one. Approximately a month from now.
Councilmember Bryles' question?
Yeah, um. City Manager Caravino, I noticed that you mentioned, uh, that the audience will need to be masked. Is that, uh, in the council chambers, is that actually everyone would need to be? Or is there anything there that, uh, for instance, with the, uh, shielding that's been installed? That city council members would not need to be masked?
Uh, that's an excellent question. The only shields in place are for members of council. I, uh, double-checked with Grant, but I do not believe that our council members are gonna require, uh, to be wearing masks. I can tell you that all of our administrative staff will be wearing masks for those who opt to, uh, participate in chambers. And for the remaining, uh, they will be in their offices. Um, for the, for the general public, it is an enforcement question. Uh, that I'm all too familiar with from, uh, what happened a number of months ago up at our supermarket. I would, uh, really work with our city attorney to ensure that. Um, we are enforcing a mask requirement, uh, pursuant to the governor's proclamation in an appropriate manner.
Michael, I'm sorry, go ahead, Benjamin.
Uh, follow-up to that. So the, the shields that have been installed. Uh, do those negate the six-foot distancing rule or physical distancing? Or I actually, I don't know exactly how far apart those chairs are. I haven't sat in one.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a fair question. Uh, what the shields were intended to, uh, minimize was the transmission of aerosols. Which, uh, the CDC has reported are much more likely, uh, to cause, uh, an infection. Than, uh, all of the cleaning and, uh, the products and the touching that, uh, we once believed. It's, it's more about aerosol transmission. So that, uh, those, those shields are meant to minimize that, uh, as, uh. The import of your question is spot on. Uh, those are not six-foot distant. Uh, close, but not six feet. So we've, we've, we've put up the, the shields both to the left and the right as well as in the front. So it'll minimize transmission of the aerosols. Not eliminate Councilman Bryles, but minimize.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Morgan.
Uh, before I comment, is this a time only for questions or comments as well?
No, because you can go ask away.
Comment away. All right. Uh, from my perspective, I, I miss you guys. I would love to actually have a real council meeting. I think that'd be fantastic. Um, also to be fair to the public, so it's not a first come, first serve and there's always the same people or not. Or, you know, people might feel offended if they can't join. Might be better if we have the civilian side of it on Zoom, so everybody can attend the same fashion. And we open the chamber for our personal council members and city staff to do what they need. And it would also allow us to bring more city staff in there as necessary for presentations and whatnot.
Before I get to Councilmember Bond and Cavallari, Michael, could you clarify, am I wrong? Even if we wanted to have the city council meeting, we can't unless we can provide a. Vi- video or an AV option that provides the opportunity for people to participate who are, do not wanna be physically present. Is that correct?
That is my understanding, Mayor, and I'll defer to Grant on the second part of the question, but. The, the meeting's requirement may require that the public be able to participate in person if the meeting is being held there. Grant, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, right now, the. The, uh, proclamation, twenty twenty-eight.
the proclamation 2028-14 requires you to hold your meetings available not in person, but online. It allows the use of, in phase three, it allows the use of the City Hall for a for people to attend subject to all the miscellaneous venue requirements, which is fifty percent capacity up to four hundred, but you have to maintain social distancing of the audience and masking and all the other requirements that are that have been imposed by the Department of Health. And that is why I believe the the numbers that Mr. Caravino shared earlier, which really reduced the the effective number of people who can be in City Hall attending a meeting to so few. In other words, you could have the meeting there, but you would still have to show it on Zoom because people wouldn't be able to be, not not everybody who would want to attend or could attend could could be there physically.
Okay, and we had talked about procuring some AV system. Are we still actively working to do that?
Yes, we are, Mayor.
Do we have an update on when we might expect something?
Well, we've checked with a couple of additional vendors and we're hoping at our next council meeting to have a comprehensive update.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Bond and then Councilmember Cavalieri.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna turn my hand off now. Christmas time, I drove through Fairway subdivision. There was an amazing display going on. A little sign said, turn your radio to this channel. And you turn it there and they're broadcasting and you can hear their Christmas music and sit in your car. Let's hit that guy up and get that thing and transmit to the parking lot. People could turn their FM radio on in their car and listen to the council meeting, just a thought.
Councilmember Cavalieri?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm not going to support another month long extension. I think I had made that pretty clear. We we've been at this for thirteen months and to be honest, I'm a bit shocked there's not a component in place already to have some sort of transmittable Zoom meeting to public that does not want to attend. I don't really see it any more technically different than anything we're doing here right now. Whether it's what services you want open or do not want to open at this point, or what the capacity is, that can be hashed, that should have been hashed out already, but the fifty percent threshold works in grocery stores, it works in restaurants, and everybody who in the community is a willing participant. And those front doors should be open, and I don't care if it's somebody wants to just use the bathroom. This is this is their building. It's not ours. I'm not going to get into too many nuances of where we are at with this with this state versus other states. But if the grocery clerks can be there, the bartenders and barmaids can be there, gas station attendants can be there, and everybody survived it, I think we can too. So I won't support this. I think we need to open up at the appropriate capacity as is mandated by the governor. We're in phase three. Let's act like it. Thank you.
Councilmember Morgan, is your hand back up?
Yes, it is, Mayor. To Councilman Bond's point of getting an easy system like that, much like Councilman Cavalieri is currently sitting at the chamber with his iPad, we can all just have our iPads set up and each member of staff have their iPads and we have a Zoom meeting in person. And that's it.
Two follow up questions to those points. To Councilmember Bond's point, Grant, is it simply a matter of making it available to be heard? Or do we have to make it available to participate? So if someone wanted to comment, do we know? Is there? Do we know if there's an answer to that question?
Let me make sure I understand your question, Mayor. Is your question that there has to be the the ability of people to comment as well as to hear it?
Yeah, Councilmember Bond commented that, you know, Fairway's broadcasting their Christmas program. So why couldn't we just broadcast this? So I'm asking, is there a requirement that not just making it able to be heard under the Open Public Meetings Act, do we have to provide an opportunity for people to participate to comment if they wanted to?
Which we could accommodate that with. We could give them a flyer that says, call this number to to comment at the end of the meeting.
I agree. I'm just trying to understand if that's a requirement or not.
No, we should. We should definitely be available for for anybody that wants to participate. And if they can't come in or they're fearful of coming in, we could take a microphone to them in their car. We can do this. We certainly should allow them and encourage them. We have an opportunity to let you speak if you want to, and this is how you'll do it. That can be addressed.
Yeah.
I would hope that we would, even whether we're required to or not.
I understand what Councilmember Bond is saying, and I was just trying to pull up and I I think Mr. Caravino may have it as well, which is the the text of proclamation 2028-14. And I'll have to check on that and see. I know, you know, we it prohibits the, you know, meeting in person was was there was was the focus there because people can't be there to participate. So let me just pull that up in a minute and circle back and get back, see if I can pull that up and answer your question, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Stekler is pointing at his hand.
I'm sorry, I have a rather strange hand. It's not as yellow as the rest of yours, so.
Stand out as much, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I gotta borrow a jacket from Mr. Todd. I have a couple of thoughts on this that I wanted to just to bring up to the group. One is, I do belong to other associations that for the last few months, we've been doing exactly this where half our people attend on Zoom and half attend in the built in the room. And it's a very simple process. We do need a monitor, which we have. And we, you know, we need a kind of internet connectivity, which we have. So it is very feasible to do. So I think we can easily get past the internet Zoom meeting application in our room. It doesn't have to be as Cecil B. DeMille as some of us would like it to be initially, but it could be simplistically a digital camera that is pushed around on a tripod to where people are talking and you have somebody filming. So it could be done. To the city manager, who you and your team have just done an incredible job over the last thirteen months, just keeping this city going. And I don't want to, I hear your request to extend another thirty days. And I would would honor that if I had not said thirty days ago, I want you to be ready to open after April sixth, like kind of whatever you do. I feel we do need to open. I think I agree with Councilman Cavalieri that that this is our City Hall. And I look around at other businesses that are open, doctors' offices that are open, companies that I deal with that are open, the phase that we're in in the state, I think it's time to open. And I did like what he said. City manager, it's your, you know, we want our, we want our City Hall open. I'd love to have you have passports open. If you can't have passports open, I don't think we can dictate to you what you do inside there because it's your City Hall, but we do want our City Hall open. I think that is the request that we can make of you. We can make a specific request. We want the city council chamber open. If people want to come and see us, we're willing to get down there again and and do the meetings from there. But I also would not support extending it. I want I want the City Hall open. I don't want it to be closed anymore. But I I defer to you to how you want to, how do you want to run it? I'd love to have that passport office open. But I'd like to say, I'd like Mill Creek to be, if it is one of the first cities to be open. I think that would be great.
Yeah.
That was not in our control, Councilman Stekler, is the ability of staff to get the vaccinations. And so I just, I'm just reporting anecdotally that there are staff that still wish to participate in getting the vaccination. And we have really worked and it's very resourcefully to try and get anyone who wants the vaccination to obtain it. And what I'm reporting is that we're not at that number yet. I will do as a council ask, if it's the will that we open, we will do our very best to do that while also managing whatever potential personnel matters we have to adjust or address as a result of that.
Agreed. And there are a number of companies that have this same issue where their employees aren't vaccinated and they want them to come back.
We agree. We're consulting with ours as well.
Right. And we have to be be sensitive that. The good news is April nineteenth, it's open. Right now, we're running about three hundred open vaccinations a day in Edmonds and and Payne Field now because of the count is up. So we are, the vaccines are here and they are much more readily available than they ever have been in the past. Some of your people may be too young to qualify. Some may only be on their first one, but I would want you to continue to offer the distancing and, you know, proper facial coverings just to protect people during this process. I don't expect there to be lines of people in there doing passports. I do expect them to be out in the cars, as Councilmember Bond said. That's just smart and they could be called in via mobile phones. A lot of companies are doing that. I'd just like to see us do something to open up our City Hall again. And I would I would vote for that.
I think we're muddying two issues because whether we open the council meeting for council, council chambers for council hearings is an entirely separate issue from whether we open City Hall because the council meetings have OPM requirements and things like that that are going to be dealt with separately from opening the City Hall itself. So the question I have gets to the point Michael brought up is, and maybe this is a question for Grant to answer, is do we have any ability, not we, does Michael have any abilities as a city manager to compel employees to come back to work? So even if we said we want City Hall open, how do we get the bodies of our employees in the building if they're not willing to come in until they're vaccinated? Do we, I'm not, I'm not under, even if we said we want it open, which I think everyone does, I'm not sure we can compel that.
Right. And you've you framed it well, Mayor. There are two separate issues here. One is whether the city council can hold its meetings in person, which is something that is not permitted under the current the current proclamation. It allows an option to have people there at a city property in 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 the audience. But it says, any public agency subject to forty-two thirty, which is the Open Public Meetings Act, is prohibited from conducting a public meeting subject to the Open Public Meetings Act unless the meeting is not conducted in person and instead provides options for the public to attend the proceedings through a minimum telephonic access. So in answering your question, does it require the ability to have public participation in the meeting? And the answer is, no, it does not require that. Your your own rules may, but this doesn't, the the proclamation doesn't.
Question. That wasn't his question.
That was that was part of my question. He, I think he's getting to the other part, but so.
The other part is the question of whether you can, the separate issue is whether you want to open City Hall and whether the city manager can compel employees to return. That isn't, that's complicated. And it involves questions of whether certain employees may have be able to seek accommodation because they have specific conditions that they that may make them higher risk. There may be also other other reasons, public health reasons, why they can't participate in person at this time during the pending of the pandemic. So it's a compliment. I don't have a straight answer for you that that applies to all employees. There are some nuances that apply to a number of different categories of employees. And that's why the city manager is concerned about not being able to at this point in time when there's been all as much vaccination as might be taking place a month from now, be be in a position to look at what the workforce is and whether there are key employees who are who are not able to return due to physical conditions or that would preclude it, their participation, or whether there's enough personnel to to be able to man the functions of City Hall. And I think those are the considerations that the city manager is working through right now.
So here's what I would suggest, and I'm interested to hear other thoughts. The proclamation is drafted based on this discussion really perpetuates muddling these two issues. It sounds like on the first issue of our council meetings, we will get an update next week that hopefully will give us a timeline of when we can have an AV system in place. That, go ahead, Michael.
Mayor, I just want to foreshadow that what we're working on right now, and we just need to cross a few technical Ts and Is, is a simulcast of our city council meetings. It addresses, I believe, a number of comments that were made. We're hoping to be able to simulcast through YouTube if we're able to pull this off. So that's that's the update that I'm hesitant to announce without us finalizing the work on that.
I understand that, but the point being is we will have a better idea and information is to make a decision on when we will be able to have this option for council meetings, which is a separate issue from the opening City Hall. And I don't think I have enough information myself to make a decision whether to extend this proclamation because I don't know when city manager is logistically and legally going to be able to open City Hall, even if we all wanted it. Councilmember Cavalieri?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm a little confused. So we received several rounds of stimulus monies and and I maybe I assumed, and maybe I'm wrong, that some of the COVID monies were used for the HVAC in here to make sure there's clean air, ionized air flowing through here and that an ability for us to transmit to the public, whether it's telephonically or through video cameras or whatever the mechanism is, that that was just, it was pretty much done. It was already in place that we just needed like plug it in. So I'm a little surprised that that it's not ready to go. We had this conversation a month ago, so and then subsequent two months before that. So I would, again, the according to the mandate, and even when Grant read the actual proclamation, you are eligible to have council meetings. You just have to manage the number, the distance. We know what the maximum capacity is seventy-four, so eighteen persons in this room would be appropriate, would be fall under the guise of everything. It's, I don't think it's a big pill to swallow to make that happen. So and I'm not trying to give anybody extra work, but it's been thirteen months and actually a little bit more. It's been almost fourteen. So I say, let's get this ball rolling and light this candle.
In fairness to staff, it hasn't been fourteen months. The money didn't get approved till summer and it had to be used by November thirtieth. And that was the issue staff faced was getting the equipment procured in time to spend the dollars before before the deadline, but.
To your point, though, not to interrupt, I'm not bashing staff about fourteen months, fourteen months since the COVID restrictions hit.
I hear you. John, change the call your hand back to yellow. Then I'll see it every time. Sorry.
I have no idea how to change it back to yellow. I really don't. I'm sorry.
You can figure out how to change it from from yellow.
Don't know. I'm the only flesh colored hand in the in the crowd. Two thoughts. One, I would strongly urge us not to go with YouTube due to the difficulty of broadcasting it and the inability to interact. So the public to ask questions, to come back and forth. I don't think, I think I think Zoom would actually be much easier to do than a YouTube. And if we do go with YouTube, I think it would defeat the purpose that many of the people want, which is the ability to interact with the council and ask questions of the council. And I would, I would strongly encourage us to look at a very low cost Zoom alternative. And, you know, I think if if there is information presented to me that says we cannot ask people to come back to work unless that people can can say, I don't want to come back to work unless I'm fully vaccinated with two shots. I don't think that is even in our union contract, but if that were the case, I could stand corrected and could take a whole different look at this. But as far as I understand, if we open up the office, then the employees need to be protected, but should come back to work. And if our attorney or somebody shows me something different, I will stand corrected. But in answer to your question, Mayor, can we ask them to come back? In all of my actions and involvement with other companies, and the answer is yes, as long as you provide them protection. There are people that might have preexisting conditions that could ask for a special predisposition. That 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 could, that's possible. That's possible. Somebody with COPD or something like that. But at this point, I just have to be alert. Maybe there's something in a city run government that's different. But I do, I do go back to, you know, I kind of liked to have had this conversation over the last thirty days, not the day that this permit ends, April sixth. So I still stand a little frustrated saying, we gave you the notice to get prepared to be open in some way, shape or form. And now we're saying, well, no, we couldn't get it done. So I'm still frustrated and don't want to extend.
Get to council member Bond in one second. Grant and Michael, at twelve oh one, what changes? When this proclamation expires, what changes with the way the city is operated and city hall is operated?
Grant, you go first and I'll follow.
So it would end the closure of city hall and to the public is what it would do. End the closure of city hall to the public. That doesn't mean that that you couldn't establish and have social distancing rules as you're seeing in, in a variety of locations. That doesn't address the question of whether or not you're allowed to have a council meeting in person because under the proclamation, it says specifically you can't.
Unless there's a caveat after that, Grant. You read it.
What was the caveat?
What are you, what are you referring to, council member?
The two sentences you read after that.
Says that unless it is not conducted in person and instead provides options for the public to attend the proceedings through at a minimum telephonic access and may also include other electronic internet or means of remote access. And it provides the ability for all persons attending the meeting to hear each other at the same time.
Council.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm okay with the city manager looking into the YouTube option. The fact is, is that most of our council meetings, the chambers are often empty, but for a handful of regulars. And even the regulars rarely choose to comment. It's good to have it available. If you look at our own Zoom meetings, we actually have quite a bit more participation than a normal council meeting. And the vast majority of people that are here listening are not commenting at the beginning or at the end. Even though they're given the option to, but they do want to hear what's being said. They want to hear who's saying it, what the discussion is. And YouTube, I think, would facilitate that for folks that do want to be heard, do want to participate. We want to make sure there's options available there, and there are.
Michael and Grant, did we not, with the last time we extended this, have language that I thought we discussed having language that extended it's subject to the direction from the council to for the city manager to look at opening city hall as soon as possible under the restrictions. And I don't, am I not seeing that language in the proclamation that is in, in our packets? I just see it extends it to April sixth.
The, the, the last sentence, Mayor, in the furthermore.
Oh, that's, that's.
Yeah, unless circumstances permit an earlier opening. That was the language we captured from council's direction.
So I'm hearing the consensus, we want city hall open as soon as we can and to conduct city council meetings as soon as we can. But if we didn't extend the proclamation, we have the practical problem for the city manager that he can't overnight at twelve oh one have everything opened.
So, Mayor.
Yes.
If I could suggest a, an alternative.
Please.
That would be to extend it, extend the, the proclamation by a week, allow us to come back to you next week or two weeks and allow us to come back to you next week with a, a plan for how we would deal with opening city hall, what the, what, what the conditions would look like and how we would handle and whether we could handle a, whether it would be possible to have live meetings and what the, under the, under proclamation. Under the proclamation and also with, with a live component of audience and what that audience component might look like. Lay it out.
Grant, what I would add is we do have a plan. We've worked on a plan for a long time. It's the opportunity to present it to council. And with regard to those that have worked in earnest to get the inoculation, it is not something that any one that I'm aware of is taking that responsibility passively as a member of the workforce. Everyone's eager to get back to city hall. What we'd like to show you is, is what we've laid out that would enable temperature checks. We've put together a whole protocol for opening up the passport office to enable folks to register online. They could fill in a calendar on the date that those who can plan ahead can do so. We've got a protocol for those that would be the walk-ups. We're expecting there's going to be a tremendous amount of interest in our passport office when it opens. And our passport staff were given priority in getting the inoculations where I have an opportunity to facilitate that. Our protocol has been for the public facing staff at city hall and at the police department to have access to inoculations first, where that's even been available. So we've worked and we've hustled and we do have a plan that we'd like to present. If all council gives is an additional time between now and the council meeting, we'd like to lay out more of what we're working on. And while I respectfully suggest that we need additional time through May fourth, if it's a will of council that we open, we'll make it happen.
Do we hear, what are the thoughts on a motion to extend the proclamation through April thirteenth to provide the city manager an opportunity to present his plan for reopening city hall at the earliest practical time?
That, that's the proposed one.
That's not, that's not what's in front of us. The, what the request in front of us, I believe, is to extend it for another month.
Correct.
So I'm going to make a motion.
Unless circumstances permit an earlier opening. It's in there. We could.
But I think what we've heard from others is there's more than, there's a desire to direct to make it happen as opposed to leaving it at the city manager discretion to determine. So council member Bond, you are in the process of making a motion.
Thank you. I share the concerns shared by council member Steckler, Cavallari, Morgan, everybody. That being said, I trust my city manager to do this appropriately. And I'm going to support the motion he made. I hope he's heard the comments. I believe he has. Staff safety is a priority. I don't share the paranoia, but I'm respectful of the people that have fears and I want to make sure that their feelings are addressed. And if they need the shot to, to feel safer about work, I support, I understand that. I'm, I see nothing wrong with that. So I support, I make a motion that we approve the proclamation before us presented by our city manager.
Second.
Discussion?
What would that date be on the proclamation? I saw April sixth.
I think the formal motion is to extend it by one month, but the city manager has heard loud and clear that we want him to work as soon as, with, with post haste to make it happen early, as soon as possible. So before I get to Vince's physical hand, I, I think I would echo council member Bond's comments. I think the one thing that is sticking with me is the city, Michael is our employee, the employees at the city are his employees. And I think we need to be respectful of how he handles his employees and getting city hall open. And so that's why I'm reluctant to force it faster. I think he's heard loud and clear from the six of us. And I think Mayor Pro Tem would probably echo this too, that the council wants this city hall back open to more normal operations as soon as we can. But anyway, so I would support council member Bond's motion. Councilmember Cavallari?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm not going to support the motion. I tell you what I will do, and I'm willing to meet somehow in the middle on this, that I will support a one week extension to April thirteenth, if on April fourteenth, which happens to be my now pregnant daughter's birthday. It's April fourteenth. We were rolling out that plan and executing it. I just want to touch on about being respectful to the city manager. I completely understand and, and I'm totally compassionate to that, but respectful to the whole process. Legislators made it clear that they weren't going to extend it another month, last month. And that's my second, actually my third unwillingness to keep moving forward with extensions. I, I don't know what another week or a month is going to do, but I'm willing to, what we shouldn't have done already, but I will extend it by one week. I will agree to that, but I won't support this motion at this point.
Councilmember Steckler?
I'm afraid I, I will also not support council member Bond's motion. And it's not a matter of lack of respect of what they put. It's a matter of our respect. We asked him to put a plan in, in place and present that to us prior to this date of April sixth. So I would support Councilman Cavallari's recommendation of a one week extension and a review of their plan. I would support that, but I can't support council member Bond.
It's not a matter of supporting me. It's just.
The motion, pardon me, the motion, the motion, council member Bond's motion.
Any other discussion? We have a motion on the table. There's been no amendment from motion to amend the motion. So the only mention.
Call the question.
Call the question. No, the question's been called Vince, I think. Was your, Adam, was your hand up before the question was called?
His hand was up before Mark said that.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just going to recommend motion to change it to one week instead of a month to amend it to April fourteenth instead of, is it April fourteenth? April fourteenth. It's January fourth.
Thirteenth, I believe.
Thirteenth.
I, I suggest we just vote on the motion. If it fails, we can bring a new motion.
Okay.
Well, there's been no second to the original or to that, that motion. So why don't we just go ahead and?
So, so I'll second council member Morgan's motion. I was giving council member Bond the latitude of either having a thumbs up or thumbs down vote. I'm not sure how you want to roll with it. I will defer to you.
Well, now that the motion's been seconded, we don't have a choice. We have to vote on the amendment to the motion.
State the amendment again.
The amendment would be to revise your motion from one month to one week.
Do we, is there discussion available? Can we ask the city manager to comment?
Yes, you may.
City manager, do you have any thoughts on your ability to accommodate that timeline?
I believe that we can present what we've been planning for a long time within one week. I would be concerned that we would preclude us based on that presentation from council deliberating and possibly considering that we would like to extend up to May fourth. I would be concerned that we would have a a proclamation amendment now that would have us presenting on the thirteenth and provided we're open on the fourteenth, if I heard that correctly. But we have, we are prepared, we will be prepared to present on the thirteenth, what our planning looks like and relative risks and opportunities inherent in opening city hall or a variation of an opening rather than a full opening. Other possibilities that we will be able to lay out and speak to next week.
Well, we would be able to take further action if we needed to, if we hear the plan and are satisfied with it and but you need another week to fully implement it. We could always consider extending it at that time if needed, implement the plan. So it doesn't preclude us from doing that.
Anytime you give us would be appreciated.
So the motion on the table is a motion to amend council, council member Bond's motion to extend the proclamation rather than a month to one week. Any further discussion?
I'll support the motion to amend. And if the city manager feels comfortable at the, at the time that he presents that he can accommodate this timeline, we can stick with it. And I'd be very willing to modify the timeline if it's unrealistic.
Okay. Any further discussion on the amendment to the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Did anyone abstain? The motion to amend, the motion is approved six, nothing. Now, the motion as amended before the council is to extend the proclamation through April thirteenth, one week from today. Any further discussion? I, I'm sorry, I believe the question was called on the underlying motion. So all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you, Michael. We look forward to see, hearing the report a week from tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Before we get in, I believe is the next item, the governance manual, or am I skipping something?
We have the the Snoomish County Interlocal Agreement for Jail Services. Item F and then G is a letter of support for the county at the hundred sixty-fourth I five interchange. And then the study session is item H.
Why don't we, those first two items you mentioned, I think should go relatively quickly, at least compared to the last two. So why don't we take those up and then we'll take, extend the meeting time and then take a two minute break before we jump into the study session.
Very good. So before introducing Chief Young to discuss the ILA agreement with Snoomish County Sheriff's Office, the requested motion will be for council to authorize a city manager to execute the interlocal agreement for jail services between Snoomish County and the city of Milk Creek. Whenever we have an interagency agreement, whether it's a new agreement or a renewal, we, I would like to bring this to council to ensure that we're all on the same page. So with that said, Chief Young, I will turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, city manager, mayor, members of the council. I just wanted to give you a quick update on the renewal that we are entering into or the respectfully requesting enter into rather with Snohomish County Jail. As you know, we do detain people into Snohomish County Jail from time to time for various crimes. People are also detained there who are sentenced by a judge. Sometimes when we book somebody in the jail, they can be there for just a few hours or they could be there for days. If they're sentenced by a judge for a various crime, they could be there for up to three hundred sixty-four days according to law. So we have had a contract with the Snohomish County Jail for many years now. The current rate that we're paying is over a hundred and twenty dollars to book. And we have some daily maintenance fees of upwards of a hundred and forty-three dollars roughly. For twenty twenty-two, we're going to see approximately a twenty-four percent increase. As a result of that, we are looking into other alternatives to try to mitigate those costs and see if we can find some other options for long-term detentions, if you will. So in, in our previous discussion with regard to how possession of controlled substance ordinance may work, we're looking into other options instead of the Snohomish County Jail in an effort to reduce those costs. Are there any questions that you have right now?
Keith, I believe you prepared a PowerPoint?
Yeah, I can put that up, sir, if you like. It was included with the packet, but I'll, I'll share the screen.
Yes, for the, the community to also see whether if you can, that'd be appreciated.
Can everyone see that?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. All right. So here, here are the previous rates that, that we have paid with Snohomish County Jail. And then it's, this is not letting me advance it, unfortunately. And then.
Yeah, that one with the red highlight, I think is, is a good summary to, to show the council and the community the increase.
Yeah, just having some technical difficulties over here. So those, those increased numbers, like I said, that's going to be about a twenty-four percent increase for next year, which concerns me because it just depends on how many people we end up booking and for what crimes. So again, that's one of the reasons that we are looking to get some different inputs from other correctional and jail housing facilities so that we can make sure that we are being responsible fiscally with regard to public monies.
Hey, chief, can I chime in while you look for that?
Absolutely, sir.
So just, I mean, for those that don't know, contracting out to other counties, other agencies is fairly common with city our sizes. We've done it before. Anybody normally serving over a thirty day sentence automatically goes to, I believe we, we, I know for a fact, we've used Yakima and Shaland County before. But now with prisoners being let out of jail more frequently than. but now with uh prisoners being let out of jail more frequently than before, uh, there's almost a bidding war, believe it or not, as weird as that sounds, heading a little bit downward. So agencies like SCORE, uh, South County and King is uh has become a new player and offering bed space at a, at a reduced rate. So um our options, and I think with the chief, to his point, was anything, anybody serving over a thirty day sentence would normally get this uh, this outsourcing, and they might amend it to even fifteen days, but that's the norm with cities our size, uh, everybody does it, Linwood does it, Bothell does it. So it's, it's not out of the norm, it's uh business as usual, smart business as usual.
Chief, I had a quick question for you. I noticed that increase, the, the big one is on the date, whatever a daily maintenance fee is. That's the one where it's over thirty-one percent or actually more like thirty-two percent uh on on that particular fee. Why, why is that one such a hard driver for an increase, do you know?
I do not know, council member, uh, these rates are established by the Snohomish County Board, so I I don't have any ideas to how they came up with the numbers.
Yeah, that would be one I'd like to, I'd just be curious as to what justifies a thirty-two percent increase year over year. Not the cost of living.
Well, I I do know that when, when we house an inmate, uh, they're, they're paying for a multitude of different things. There, there are some other options available to us. Uh, I am aware of a, an option in Issaquah where if a person elects to to serve their, their sentence down in Issaquah, they can pay for it themselves, so that's definitely one that we're going to be looking into. Cause you do have some folks that want to have, you know, kind of more of the, I guess, the Hilton experience with regard to jail versus uh, you know, some other hotels. Uh, so in anyway, uh, we are going to be looking at some of those different things in an effort to mitigate the costs and and to provide other options for us.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
See, council member Morgan's hand up, and then council member Brier's.
Um, now, in terms of on the, the prosecution side of it, uh, for those that are nonviolent offenders, what is our general policy with recommending ankle monitoring or that as opposed to jail time to potentially reduce that type of cost?
I'll do my best to answer that one, council member. Uh, that's one of those ones that occurs up at the prosecutorial level with with regard to sentencing recommendations. So it 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 depends on the criminal history, the nature of violence, and and a number of other factors with regard to whether or not uh someone gets uh, you know, an ankle monitoring or house arrest or something like that. There's a lot of different factors and variables that go into it. Um, I think right now what we're talking about is the things that we can control. Um, so that would be DUI suspended license, that kind of thing. Uh, there's going to be those other ones that are mandatory arrests and mandatory booking. Uh, as council member Bond and council member Cavallari said earlier, uh, domestic violence is one of those mandatory ones. Um, there's also some other mandatory arrests where we have to put people in jail. Um, and basically, the rule of thumb is anything with a weapon, any crime against a person or a violent crime is a booking. Um, so those are the ones we're looking at very specifically.
Got it, thanks.
So to council member Morgan's uh question, just real quick, not all crimes are eligible for home monitoring or ankle bracelets, and they have to be able to pay for it too, which is usually difficult.
Councilmember Brier's.
Yeah, are there, uh, council member Cavallari had mentioned that uh moving between or having agreements with different uh jurisdictions is common. Uh, is there any specific uh fees for transporting between these or between us to them that may be greater or lesser based on distance from us?
So I'll answer the, the question to the best of my ability, and I'll defer over to council member Cavallari. Uh, there are a couple of different facilities that will transport for us for no cost. Um, then there's some other ones that will, and councilor Cavalier, did you have any more to add on that?
Yeah, you're exactly right, so um as I stated, I don't know if my, if I got cut off when I was talking before, I was having a little trouble with the wifi, but most agencies uh are trying to fill jail bed space now. So I think down the line, I think almost all of them are now transporting for free, including SCORE, which is rare. By the way, the inmates hate SCORE, so. Thought I'd throw that in there.
Yeah, that would be the opposite of the Hilton experience.
Any further questions, Benjamin? Any other questions? This would be the point where we entertain a motion.
I made the motion to approve the interlocal agreement as written with the Snohomish County Sheriff's Office for jail bed space.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Did anyone abstain? Motion passes six nothing. Uh, Michael, next.
Thank you, Mayor, it's uh item G, which is a discussion of the letter of support for uh county at the hundred sixty-fourth in the I five interchange project. And Director Todd will speak to that. We're requesting council's um approval to authorize the mayor to sign the draft letter that was attached for the packet. Mike?
Yeah, thank you, I'm gonna try to make this quick, cause we're running late. Uh, basically, the federal legislators have asked the cities and the counties if there are projects they would like to put in the infamous list of um pit pork, which is, has gone away, but now has a new name under our new uh legislation in in Washington DC. The first one that has come out is the one from Congressman Larson, who is not our representative, but he represents much of Snohomish County. In the past, the way the county has gone, it, the county and cities has gone, it, this is to use the regional priority list. I'm gonna put that up on the screen here, was in the packet, and is everybody seeing that? This map?
There we go.
Okay, good, thank you. So Mill Creek is here, we do not have presently have any projects on this list. This is the list that was used a number of years ago for us to get our money for the thirty-fifth, and so this list is effective. At this point in time, we don't have any projects. But looking at this list, the one that is, the county is putting, is uh, got on their list of preferred projects is when they're designated A here, and down below, you can see it is this Texas T inter- interchange, a hundred and sixty-fourth and I five. That would have great benefit to our citizens who are commuting and or going to various other functions via uh, via six, one sixty-fourth, and we're all aware of the congestion there at I five. This is an eighty-five million dollar project in total, but the county is asking for ten million dollars worth of planning and design funding. And so if we elect to have the mayor supply, sign, sign this letter of support, they would put that in their grant package. They'll go first to Congressman Larson and maybe potentially to to Sanders Cantwell and Murray later on, if they also do a similar process. So we're asking tonight, do you consider accepting the letter? The letter is a fairly simple one that just says we're expressing support, doesn't express any commitment for us to do anything other than our support for that project. But these letters of support sometimes help in terms of prioritizing those letters with the congressman uh and with their uh, with their colleagues. So with that, I would recommend that we, I'll take any questions, but that's the recommendations. We authorize the mayor to sign various letters of support, this one in particular. And the time sensitivity is the package for Congressman Larson needs to be sent in tomorrow, without opening to questions.
Mike, I, I had a question. Um, I'm so sorry, never mind, Benjamin's guys hand up.
Benjamin, then council member Steckler.
Director Todd, I I noticed that there was also another project there for uh one hundred thirty-second at I five. Is there anything that that's on the list, I'll put it that way? Is there anything precluding us from showing favor to two projects or no?
The, the reason we're not showing favor to this one, item C, which is hundred thirty-second, is the county has just put all their marbles in this basket. So we're, we're supporting the county's decision to pick this project, so it's their decision, but I'm with you, the hundred thirty-second's also of interest. It is a much more expensive project and it's further out, it's a hundred and forty-two million, and it does not impact, I think the reason for their choice was that the hundred and sixty-fourth is impacted by the swift orange line that will get us to light rail in Linwood in twenty twenty-four. And so I think that is a much more immediate need, I think is why the county picked that one, and it's also closer in in terms of planning.
All right, thank you.
Certainly.
So my, my question, uh, Director Todd, was I noticed in the cover letter uh that Del Benny's office, Susan Del Benny's office is not planning any major contracts, but that um uh Senator um Murray and Cantwell will have similar processes through their offices. Are, is this going to hurt us if we support Lar- Rick Larson's? Should we be waiting to see what Patty Murray and Marie Cantwell come up with, or is that not really necessary?
That's not really necessary. What'll happen for Del Benny, if you look at this picture again here, she is li- likely to support these projects in the county. Right, one on Highway nine, there's one on five twenty-two that are in her district, and the county is proposing those as their priority projects in her district. And the state senators are for all the projects, and so this is kind of a reasoned approach by the collection of cities and counties, Snohomish County's cities and the Snohomish County itself to say, what are we most likely to be able to get to address these priority projects for all of us? But these are just not as interesting to Mill Creek, so we are not likely to, to, to provide a letter to Del Benny just because the projects are going to be outside of where we are.
No, I understood that, but this will not hurt us with Murray or Cantwell then?
No, should not.
Okay, great, that's my question.
Any further questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
Authorize the mayor to sign the letter of support to Congress for Snohomish County, one sixty-fourth and I five interchange project funding request on behalf of the city council of Mill Creek.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? The motion passes six to nothing. Before we move to uh the study session, why don't we first uh extend the meeting till, let's say, is nine thirty going to be enough time? I, what, okay, extend the meeting to, we have a motion to extend the meeting to nine thirty.
So I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion, the meeting is extended till nine thirty. With that, why don't we take a, it's eight twenty-two, why don't we take a three minute break till eight twenty-five, and then we'll reconvene and move into the study session?
Very good, thank you.
Wow, I feel so lonely. They're all gone, all of them. Well, Grant's still there, Grant's hanging out.
I'm here.
Yeah, look at you, good job.
So glad I brought some crackers.
Oh, I know, it comes Vince with some snacks. Well, Mark's got his whole kitchen behind him, so he's, he's set if he needs some food.
Mark doesn't strike me as a cook.
Well, I bet he could, I bet he can nuke a mean frozen burrito, you know? That's one thing that's good, one good thing about the quarantine, my wife has been cooking every night for the last thirteen months. She is becoming an awesome cook. Oh, I don't want to eat out at any restaurants, geez, food's good at home.
We've really uh, we've really enjoyed hel- one of the food services, HelloFresh. It's actually very good, I I'm very happy with it. Three meals a week means two meals for both of us, really, so six for sixty bucks a, a week, can't be it.
Oh, you can't be, you know, I just made that comment about my wife, she just sent me a text, do you need some food? What timing? So perfect.
We all, all back?
Barb, Barb's got a snack, Barb, what are you eating? Oh, looks good.
Did you bring some for the rest of us?
I had cake about eight years ago, that was the last time I had cake.
Brad, I think we're all here, so the floor is yours. Okay. Okay. Are we all ready to go, Mayor?
Yes, we are, Grant, thank you.
Okay, um, so this is the third installment of our work on revising your governance manual. You may recall, we've had two presentations where we've dealt with a number of the articles. Tonight, we're going to focus on the rules governing the content of council meetings. And uh although there, there's an element of a tutorial about parliamentary procedure in here, I think the mayor's been uh working through it a little bit tonight uh in the course of your meeting as well. So tonight, we're going to address articles seven, eight, and nine of uh, of the governance manual. Um, in the interest of time, I'm going to be a little brief, but feel free to stop me anytime you have questions, and we can certainly uh have time for questions uh later on as well. The first part is, involves article seven, and then that is currently titled, the preparation for council meetings. And there's not a lot of changes that we're proposing here. I, I asked Naomi Fay, your city clerk, our city clerk, to take a look at some of these uh concepts and ideas, and uh, and she was kind enough to, to share some, some thoughts and suggestions. Um, one of the things we're doing is uh, we want to add some revisions in section seven point one to basically formalize the, the procedures that you've had in place already, which is um the fact that the, the city manager, the city clerk, uh, the mayor and the mayor pro tem um work uh together in setting the meeting agenda. That's formalized here, and also um formalizes the procedure that you've adopted about including a tentative council meeting agenda in your, in your packet every, for every meeting so that you have uh, you're telescoping the issues that are being developed that will be coming to the council in uh the near future. Um, also, i- it formalizes the propos- the new initiative, the proposed new initiatives process that you've been using, and certainly we had an example of how that's worked in the last couple of meetings uh when council member Cavallari brought uh the, the uh proposal for uh an ordinance to address the uh, the recent state Supreme Court decision. Um, namely that that, the, that council members are encouraged to confer with the city manager, the mayor, and the mayor pro tem ahead of time, uh, have it included, have that matter included in the new initiatives agenda item, and then uh present that at the council meeting and obtain council concurrence to proceed forward and have staff develop whatever the initiative is. Um, there was some really old language in section seven point five about uh have packet delivery, and um what we're trying to do is just move it to the, the, the second decade of the twenty-first century and make, make it clear that packets are delivered electronically. And of course, the city clerk would have a printed packet available to the council member on request. That's really all the changes we have for section, for article seven. We move on to article eight regarding the rules of order for the council meetings. So here's the, today's uh, here's today's trivia question, who is the person on the right? Any guesses, any takers?
Isn't that Brian Holt's clause dad?
Good guess, uh, but not the correct right.
It is Roberts of Roberts Rules.
Very good. Is that Councilmember Morgan?
Councilmember Brials.
Excuse me, Councilmember Rose, I don't see it on there. Yes, that is Henry Martin Roberts, famous for developing Roberts Rules of Order. And and so there you go. You've 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 got your your evening of trivia at eight thirty this evening. We are proposing some significant changes here, though, particularly in section eight point one. Not only are we adopting Roberts Rules of Order, they change over the years they're adopted. So we want to just reference the newly revised version and the revised versions every few years. And under that, there are, there are some provisions that are sort of the basics of parliamentary procedure that we're going to include. When when we were laying out the outlines for the changes in the governance code, there was a request to just talk about some of the key parliamentary procedure provisions. And so we'll do that briefly here. First of all, as you all know, the mayor acts as the chair on all matters involving points of order rules. The mayor's rulings are, however, subject to appeal if moved and seconded and overturned by a majority vote. I think most of you probably know the mayor sitting as chair cannot make a motion him or herself without temporarily relinquishing the chair to the mayor pro tem more likely than not. And so there is a way for the mayor to step aside temporarily. Also, if you looked at the governance code, there's a fairly, a couple of rather lengthy exhibits in the in the end of it. One is Resolution one, which is a fairly arcane document adopted in nineteen eighty-three that has a number of the parliamentary procedure rules. It's, I would say, quite dated, especially when it comes to the use of the gender terms in the document. Our recommendation is to delete it. And ultimately, as we'll get down to later on, adopt a new resolution that sort of incorporates the fact that you're adopting Roberts Rules of Order, governs the procedure, lists the procedures that you have for voting, and also some of the key procedures you use for taking public comment and also handling public hearings. In section eight point two, this addresses how motions are made. And again, most of you are very familiar with this process. You must have a second for a motion to be entertained and debated. Once a motion is seconded, it cannot be withdrawn before action is taken without the consent of council. So in other words, once you have a motion on the floor that's been seconded, you've got to vote on it. Unless there's a motion, unless it's withdrawn with, you know, you have to, you have to have a motion to withdraw it, which is seconded and approved. Amendments must relate to the main motion and cannot be stated or written in a way that would defeat the main motion. In other words, you can't kill a motion by using essentially clever language to kill it. All amendments must be seconded. And as as you all went through tonight, two amendments may be on the floor at one time, but no more than two. And amendments are voted in the reverse order in which they are made, much like what you did earlier this evening when you were voting on extension of the emergency proclamation. Let me see here. There's another one that's that that is used from time to time, including tonight, which is calling the question or moving the previous question, as it is sometimes referred to. The purpose is to end debate on a pending motion. And once it is seconded, the motion is not debatable. You must vote on the motion and a motion to call the question must pass by a two-thirds majority. So that's an interesting point, one that might want to be kept in mind. In section of eight point.
So Grant, I'm sorry, so a motion is motioned and then seconded. You're saying that's it, goes to vote, no more discussion?
On the motion to move the previous question, correct. So it's ending debate and a motion and debate must be approved by a super majority. Okay?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
When you, when you ask for the que, when you ask for the question, not the most, when you ask for the question.
And it must be seconded as well. Revisions to of the voting procedures, there's, what we have here is the current, the current annual has voice voting and we retain voice voting. But it, we also include provisions to ensure that any member may demand what they call a division, which is a roll call vote. You can do it by a show of hands or you, or someone can insist on having a roll call vote. Usually, a show of hands gets the job done, but if it's unclear, a roll call vote is in order. There is a discussion in the, in section eight point three about written ballots are are not encouraged. Well, under your current rules, and I think the procedures that we're recommending that you include is that you would only use written ballots for two elections, and that would be the election of the mayor, or three. The election of the mayor, the mayor pro tem, or for any council appointments. And we use the written ballot method, as you know, earlier this year for your votes on your council leadership and also when you had elections or votes to appoint Councilmember Brials and Councilmember Morgan. One other motion that I want to spend a lot of time with, but you hear from time to time, which is a motion to lay on the table. And that is a motion to postpone discussion of a particular issue until a time certain or until the majority votes to resume discussion of it. Again, when it's, if it's, if it's moved second and seconded, it's non-debatable and it's not amendable. So you have to vote on the question immediately. There's two ways to do it, one to have a specific date for the motion or some cities state if there's no date given when a motion to lay on the table has been adopted. There's a minimum of a certain number of days, weeks, or months before the motion can be brought back. Moving on. In section eight point seven, we just revised the language to comport with the agenda elements that you are currently using for your council meetings. And they're reflected on the on the slide here. Nothing particularly new there. It's just updating it to what your current practice is. Section eight point ten deals with public comment. Currently. Your city is is one that allows two opportunities for public comment at each meeting. Right now, that is not reflected in the governance manual. So this would include that as something that you've done and as part of your current practice. It wouldn't, a new wrinkle would be to give the mayor the opportunity to limit the total amount of time allowed for public comment if it's necessary in order to pursue and complete all the business that is scheduled for the council that night. One other one addition that is being suggested, at least for your thought and consideration, is a number of cities have a rule that says a maximum of three people are permitted to speak on each side of any one topic during each of the public comment periods. In other words, if you have an issue where there are people supporting it and opposing it, you would hear, you would be here a maximum of three on each side, each one of your opportunities for public comments. So there would be an opportunity for up to six people to speak at the, at those in the course of your, your meeting.
For, is this for anything, Grant, that that you're just saying a maximum of three? Like, let's say we have a big land use decision to make. Are you saying three and three get to speak for and against?
No.
I would oppose that.
No, that's, and I thank you for that clarification, Councilmember Cavallari, because this would apply to your just public comment. If you're having a public hearing on an issue, you would take much more than that. You would take as as many as your time would allow. In other words, if you had allowed an hour for public, for for the public hearing, you would fit as many people into that space as you as you could and organize it in a way that made perhaps some sense in terms of people for or against, or the proponents or the opponents. But no, this would only apply to the routine public comment.
And maybe the revision is to clarify this is for the audience communication portion of the meeting.
Yes, yeah, I think that would be a very good.
Well, what is the, what? I guess my question is, why would we limit? When when citizens come to speak at our council meetings, even if they, we have five or 10 people that want to speak on one subject? And what do we always want to hear from the citizens? Why would we want to limit it?
It's going up for discussion, John, is some cities do this. So it's not suggesting that we do it. Typically, in audience communication, all we've done is limited to three minutes apiece.
Oh, so this is not going into our governance manual?
This is a proposal to include this.
If we don't want to include this, we won't.
But that's. Oh, so when do we have a discussion on whether or not we want to include this?
This would be a good time for Brian to feedback on it.
That's what I thought. Yeah, now's the time for feedback.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I don't support this. I think the public comes to speak at our meetings. We want to hear from them. If five people want to speak on something, let them speak. I would never want to shut out public comment from, from, from the public. I would, I would strongly oppose this.
It does sound a bit like suppression. I support John on that. I maybe eight point ten is probably not appropriate or unnecessary.
No, it's not all of eight point ten. It would just be the last bullet. The other just deal with routine.
Yeah, just the third bullet.
I was just going to echo Councilman Steckler and Cavallari. I'd never want to suppress the opinion of the public under any circumstance, even if it means that our meetings run a little later. That's fine. That's our duty to serve the public. So that that's it.
I'm sensing a consensus to to drop the that provision about limiting the amount of public comment.
Think you have that direction.
Yes.
Thank you. All right.
Mr. Stecker, just for the record, my father's name is Robert, and he is an attorney.
And he liked to wear little uniforms, right?
All right, the bonus, now you've done it. The bonus question is what year were Roberts Rules of Order first published?
Benjamin?
No Googling.
No Googling. The answer is eighteen seventy-six.
Yeah, I did not have that in my, on the top of my head. But I did know that the only authorized concise guide is put out by his grandson of the same name, the third.
That is correct. That is correct.
My father was ninety-one.
All right. Moving right along. One thing, one of the other items that's in your governance manual right now is an exhibit B, which is sort of a, it talks about being rules for public hearings. But it really seems to be focused more on quasi judicial public hearings. It's not particularly clear in that regard. And so what this provision does is it requires council to adopt rules that will govern the duration and limits for public comment or testimony at a hearing. That's typically done based upon the amount of time available and obviously how significant the issue is to the community. Allows the time limits to fit within a lot of, you know, you know, it also allows the council to adjust the limits and organize the comments, you know, with proponents or opponents. You can decide how how the, how the, how you want to take the testimony. But I also think we, it's time to delete the exhibit B and to adopt a set of rules in a separate resolution governing the procedures for legislative public hearings, because you clearly are going to have some coming up in the near future, including on, on, you know, land use matters, but also on other legislative matters.
Grant, as long as I've been on the council, and Mark, tell me if it's been differently longer, whether it's audience communication or legislative hearings. We've always typically just said three minutes.
That's correct.
But that that's not specifically reflected anywhere, Grant, in the manual itself?
No.
And we've not been very rigid on that either. We throw it out there, but people are allowed to say what they came to say.
And typically, if it's a, if it's a, you know, complex issue, the duration of the hearing might need to be adjusted, depending on how many people want to be heard and also the, you know, the amount of people that are interested in the, in the topic and also how much time needs to be given to the staff for presentations. Okay. Article nine is a very short article, and it just states that the manual is a guidance document that its goal is to provide information, provide information and guidance for the council members and administration for the operation and the conduct of the city's business. One of the things it it does and it will continue to do is restate that that only the council can rely on it, and it doesn't create substantive rights or for others or other members of the public. It's something that you use as a guidance document. Having said that, in addition to having a resolution governing the conduct of public hearings, it would be good to have a resolution, a separate resolution voted on that would include several items. And that would be the procedures you use for your leadership elections, the rules for public comment at council meetings that we were talking about in section eight point ten, and for legislative public hearings, so that you have a document that is is a res, in the form of a resolution. And it essentially will take the place of some of these older resolutions that you had as exhibits to the governance manual.
That's something you're going to propose bringing back to us in the weeks or month ahead?
Yes, that is correct. In fact, those are the remaining tasks, you know, rescinding Resolution one, bringing you a new resolution that will cover those items, the leadership election process, public comment, and legislative public hearings. And then we'll try to put together all the revisions that we've done and the comments we, suggestions we received from council in the process and hopefully bring it to you next month.
One item I don't think we've got to yet is the discussion on whether we should have a code of ethics that goes beyond the minimum required by state. We add that to a study session possibly in May and then push back the last bullet point by one month.
Good question. City manager might want to weigh in on that one as well.
I think we should stage it up and at least be able to review it.
Okay, we can do that. So maybe you talk about code of ethics in May and then June for the final adoption of the the document.
Mind if I ask what the rationale is behind the code of ethics?
Well, that's Vince, the discussion is, is right now, there are certain minimum requirements established by state statutes. Some cities have broader codes of ethics that apply, not just to the council, it applies to city government. So I think the discussion we haven't had yet is whether we want to consider adopting something like that. So we would look at the examples that I, that Grant would provide. I think there was one from Kirkland, Bellevue, and one or two other cities. And have a discussion about whether we should, and if we, there's a consensus that we should, what what it should look like.
Mayor, my, my, if I could, my suggestion might be we would finish up the the governance manual next month and then have a separate one on the, on a code of ethics, because it's probably going to be a little bit more involved and require a little bit more time and likely would be adopted, not in the governance manual, but would be adopted by a separate resolution as well.
That works for me too, if it works for others.
So we'll get this work done first.
Okay.
Zero, John's pointing his hand again. Councilmember Stecker.
I couldn't remember if we had this discussion or not, so I apologize if we already have it. When we went over this, Grant, did we talk about the ability to attend council meetings and vote remotely early on, or did we get a conclusion on that?
There is a provision currently in the governance manual that allows for voting, for attendance and voting remotely. I believe there is a requirement that a council member who's going to be doing so seek permission to do so in the, at the meeting prior to the council member's absence. Now, obviously, we're, we're, right now, we're in the COVID world where all this is working remotely, but it assumes at some point in time, the council's meeting regularly back at City Hall.
Okay, so we will be able, should somebody have a conflict, can't attend, they could zoom in, they could attend remotely and still be able to vote?
Correct.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. You're a nun. Thank you, Grant. Do you have anything further on this?
No, we don't, mayor. Thank you.
Okay. We will roll on to the consent agenda. Tonight we have just item I, council meeting minutes of March twenty third, two thousand twenty one and city council special meeting minutes of March thirty first, two thousand twenty one. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
A motion is second by council member Morgan. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 The opposed, any extensions? Consent agenda is approved six to nothing. Reports, I just have a couple, two items. Mayor Protem and I are going to do another coffee talk on our off week this month, so that will be April twentieth. I believe the initial notice has already gone out, so we're going to do that again from six to seven. Uh, two weeks ago, I brought up the letter that the mayor of Everett had asked us to support. I just wanted to report back that I don't recall ever seeing the letter. It became a, what some in my office referred to as a mute point, but it's a moot point now. Um, and then the third item was yet another letter that is, we've been asked to sign on to. I, uh, Naomi forwarded to you later this afternoon. It's a letter that the Association of Washington Cities has put together. It's kind of a omnibus comment letter that they're asking cities if they want to sign on to providing comments about some of the items in the budget and some, uh, various pieces of legislation that are all referencing the letter. So it's, I didn't see anything that I was a, opposed to in the letter. I just didn't want to sign off on it without getting run into by all of you first. So I don't know if you've had a chance to review it. They're trying to get everything submitted, I believe this, uh, by tomorrow.
When was, when was the letter sent?
Naomi sent it later. I got it late this, uh, mid afternoon. I believe it was sometime.
Yeah, three P M.
I got it out as quick as I could. I came in the email box and as soon as we did, I turned it around and got it out. That's the frustrating part with some of these requests is they come up at the last minute where there's not really an opportunity for, for all of us, let alone even me sometimes to fully vet the, vet the letter. So there's no strong opinion one way or the other, I'm fine not signing it.
Well, let's just get a peek at it. Can we, oh, we can't table it till next week?
Uh, we could. My understanding is they're trying to get something out. If it wasn't by tomorrow, it's by the end of the week.
I could send an email.
My recommendation is not to sign it.
What's your take?
And I don't, I don't like being, being in this position of being asked to represent something on behalf of the city when I don't have a chance for all of you to really.
That's right.
Look at it. So that's why I didn't just sign off on it. So there's plenty of other cities. If we're not signing on to it, I don't think it's it's going to make a difference on whether this, any of the legislation that's referenced gets passed or gets amended the way they're proposing. So again, I, I try to get this out as quickly as I can, but that doesn't always provide us enough time. So I'm not hearing a strong consensus to jump on board with this letter. So I will frankly not sign on, onto it on our behalf.
I hear you crumpling it up right now.
Yep, someone was. Um, let me see here. I think that is, uh, that's all I had. Uh, Mayor Protem's not here. So council member Bond, any report tonight? Councilmember Steckler.
I only had two quick issues. One, um, really enjoyed having our legislators here last, uh, last meeting. And I did follow up with legislator Berg, who gave me some links to the, uh, ARP, the American Response Plan. Very helpful in showing me the criteria on how these dollars will, how they're, how they're structured for the cities and how they're structured for the county funds and how they're structured for the state funds. And, uh, had a great opportunity. I talked with the ma- uh, our city manager and our, our director of finance, who already were on, on board with these, but, uh, they're very descriptive and I think it'd be good for us to be aware of them from a council standpoint. Maybe in a future meeting, we could go over these or I could just, if anybody's interested, you could reach out to me. I'd be happy to share them with you or you can also go on your own A W C site uh, and take a look at the ARP, the American Rescue Plan. But it lists off how, what those funds can be used for. There's some great opportunities for us coming up. Wonderful opportunities and that's really good news also from the county and the state side as well as from the city side that we control. The, the other issue I wanted to bring up, I'm, I'm not sure how many people are aware of this. I'm going to imagine that quite a few of you are. But, uh, we had a fatality accident, another one on the Bothell Everett Highway. It was, uh, north of, uh, one sixty fourth, uh, outside of the city limits. And, um, as you will recall, a few years ago, there was a, a young man by the name of Parker Lang, who perished in an accident on that similar stretch of, uh, Bothell Everett Highway. When he crossed the road to try and get to their side to get to a sidewalk and he was struck by an oncoming car. Uh, this young man, uh, Reed Baldwin was also a Jackson High School graduate, um, only twenty two years old. And, uh, that particular stretch is very dark. Unfortunately, he crossed the line and was struck head on by an S U V and killed. And, um, so it's, they're two very, very different accidents, very different. But they are two fatalities and there have been other accidents. I'm sure the chief could speak to this too, that I know of two other ones that uh, friends of my sons have been involved in out there. It's a dark stretch of, um, of Bothell Everett Highway. It is outside of our city limits. It's technically a state highway, but it's also part of the county. I did have an opportunity to reach out to, um, our county councilman, uh, Jared Mead and, and asked him about his thoughts on it. And he had an interesting, uh, suggestion, which I said I would bring to the council tonight and thought that it'd be a great idea if maybe the city and the county, and since our state representatives are right here, maybe we could just sit down and talk about what could we do, all three of us, to help make this a, a safer stretch of, of roadway. Because again, this is outside of the city, but these people that are perishing are, 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 are city youth. And, um, I just thought I would bring it to the council. Uh, council member Mead is very interested to sit down and is confident that he can have our state legislators, uh, sit down. Maybe, I don't know if it'd be our city mayor or our city manager, uh, would like to be part of that conversation. Just who knows what we could do. Maybe there's nothing, maybe there's something, but it'd be nice if maybe we could come together and just say, what could, what could the three entities do, if anything? And so I bring that out to the group tonight. I don't have any, you know, just a thought. I just hate to see young people perishing and uh, it's, we've had a few accidents. We've had a couple of young people die. And so maybe there's something we could do on this roadway, maybe not, but maybe something we could do to make it safer. And so I, I present that for consideration. I know we can't have a dialogue during these, but, or I don't know if we can have a dialogue. But, uh, mayor, maybe you could comment if you'd even be interested in sitting down to do that.
Uh, Michael, let's start with first finding out what the state is planning. After that first accident, there was some effort to get state funding to put in a light and maybe some sidewalks in that portion of five twenty seven. And I don't know what happened to that. So maybe.
I have an update for you on that.
Okay.
That, that was legislator, um.
Harmsworth.
Harmsworth, who started that. He tried very hard to get that through.
Yep.
Unfortunately, uh, it didn't get through. And then after his term was up and, and council, and legislator Mead took over, he inherited the project, but was having a very difficult time getting funding for it. And then he moved to the county council position. So he's not quite sure what, if anything, is available right now, even if the current legislators, Berg or Lovitz, uh, are looking at it. But, uh, love it, uh, might be, you know, something to rekindle with them. But right now, what, 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 what work, um, hold, uh, uh, the original legislator, um, Brett did would probably need to be kindled significantly.
Well, let's find out what was proposed. So I saw Jared was on the first part of our meeting tonight. I don't know if anyone noticed that. So okay, any, anything further?
No.
Councilmember Cavalieri.
I'll report, mayor.
Councilmember Brials.
One item, uh, my family and I attended the extravaganza event this weekend. Uh, my family had a good time, specifically enjoying seeing a person in a bunny costume. And I did see, uh, Chief Young there, not in the bunny costume. Uh, and, uh, they liked getting their bag of candies and activities. Um, I felt like the line moved and the event worked well, considering the circumstances. I also, I'm pretty sure I saw Barb Heidel there, uh, volunteering with our, with our group. I really appreciate that. So, thank you.
Councilmember Morgan.
Thank you, mayor. No, uh, reports today.
City manager, you're, and staff reports.
Uh, mayor, before you move on, I'm sorry, I just sent you a quick chat. I forgot one thing that I was going to bring up. I do apologize. My mistake. I'm very sorry, sorry. I just was going to request an update on the graduation parade that was discussed, uh, a few meetings ago. Uh, we're coming up on the, um, the graduation period for high school, college students in our area. And I was wondering if we had any update on that. Maybe we could talk about it from the city, city manager in the next meeting. I still like to see if there's any way that we can make that happen for the graduating seniors of twenty twenty one who kind of lost their, their year. I know, uh, I don't think they're back in school. It's the younger class that's back in school right now. But it would be great if we could still move ahead with that. It was a great community event and COVID friendly.
Michael?
Is it here? Thank you. So I'll just state real quickly regarding, uh, the graduation parade. We are, uh, already working internally to plan for that in the very real likelihood that the Jackson High School does not have their own commencement. Um, there's a, a forecast that we're going to be in phase three through the end of the year. And so, um, I have a, a list of matters that I'm going to be discussing with Dr. Saltzman. That's at the top of the list. If they're going to have their own commencement, of course, that may not, uh, the, the need that we had last year was offer the, the community and the graduating seniors an opportunity to be recognized. Um, once I have that information, uh, we'll parallel plan the event, uh, but we want to come back to council. If they're going to have a commencement, is it still the will of council to have that parade? Now that'll be a choice point. If they're not, uh, then, um, we can at least report to you of what we have planned thus far. Uh, but we're looking to copy the template from last year with some minor variations. It's based on the learning and the feedback that came out of last year's event. Uh, the other real like quick announcement is that, uh, the budget books are printed and are delivered into the council's mailboxes. And, uh, I believe, uh, Councilman Cavalieri has his, having attended the council this evening. Um, if any of you, special accommodations and, uh, having the budget book delivered to you rather than coming to city hall or you want to call us when you're coming up, we'll make certain, uh, to make the chambers available to you to pick up your copy of the book or we can even deliver it to you at the door if that's your preference. With that, I'll turn the floor over to Chief Young to talk about our bridge coordination services agreement. And this is an agreement, uh, that, um, as part of past practice, perhaps administrators would have signed without bringing it to the council's attention. Uh, you're going to be seeing in our report section where we don't do the presentation on inner local agreement as we did earlier in new business. Um, we're still looking to bring council up to date on the agreements that we are signing as part of our responsibilities. And then we'll turn over to Director Todd after that. So Chief Young, if you'll get started, please.
I thank you, city manager, mayor, members of the council. Uh, here again, we wanted to give you an update on some of the different things that we have going on. Uh, Bridge Coordination Services is a critical service provider for the city of Mill Creek, serving as the domestic violence, uh, crime victim advocates for the city. Uh, so we are requesting, sorry, it's getting late and I'm tired. So anyway, my apologies for that. Um, we respectfully request and recommend approval to renew the service agreement with Bridge Coordination Services. Might help if I slowed down a little bit too. So this contract term is from January first, uh, through December thirty first of this year. And we will be exploring, uh, later this year, a multi-year service agreement in an effort to uh, contain the costs and make sure we're providing the highest quality of services to members of our community that are in need. Uh, so again, this is a renewal agreement, uh, that we've had since about twenty eighteen. Just to give you a little bit more background, uh, we had about a hundred and sixteen criminal cases in twenty nineteen. It, we fell to ninety seven in twenty twenty, uh, very likely due to COVID. And currently our numbers are, we've had five criminal cases and ten verbal cases with our February and March numbers not being available just yet. Uh, so again, we'd like to respectfully request and recommend that the council, uh, approve the renewal agreement for Bridge Coordination Services. And are there any questions?
Great agency. One hundred percent support.
I think that support needs to be evidenced by a motion.
Let's say, all right, I'll make the motion. Motion to payment with Bridge Services.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 The opposed, any extensions? Motion passes six to nothing.
Very good. Thank you, chief. Um, I did want to do a really brief introduction on the surface water management plan. Um, and I need to recognize that Director Mike Todd and his team, uh, really hustled to pull something together that, um, we should all be proud of. Uh, Director Todd, can you give us some background, please?
Certainly. I'm going to make this quick for those who want it quick. Can you see that screen? It's from our website. Does that come up yet?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yeah. So basically the requirement is that we provide an annual report each year by March thirty first to the Department of Ecology with the help of our consultant Stacy Clear at Grand Osborne, who you met last fall. She helped us put that together. And so that has been put into the system. Part of the requirement was I needed to announce to you that the, our stormwater management plan for twenty twenty one is on our website and available. So if somebody wants to comment about it, there's an email address they could comment, that draft plan, it explains what's going on. We have to the end of this month to post our report itself and we will get that done. It's a little bit arcane how to make that happen. I want to make it human, human readable when we put it on there. So we will get that done. But the report itself will evidence that there are a lot of things that we got done since last fall, but there's a lot yet to be done. Uh, we have made a valiant effort to inspect all of our ponds, vaults, filters and detention pipes uh, through the efforts of, uh, both our public works maintenance staff and through Stacy Clear and her cohorts at the, or colleagues at, uh, Grand Osborne. They've completed the majority of those. We've found that there are a few ponds that need some work and that's indeed within our permit responsibility to make sure that happens for our own or to ask homeowners associations or other private owners to do that. We are not delinquent on that. Uh, we also have some vaults. There's a couple that need some work. There's quite a few filters that need some work in primarily city, city owned, but also some private owners. This is a requirement. It used to be, I think that the sense was that we had a five-year cycle to look at these filters and these media vaults. This is very important for water quality. Those have all been at least five years. The new rules are you got to look at them every year and replace them as necessary. So we have a big slug of those to get done. Again, we're not delinquent on maintaining those. We had to get that inspection done and we got done, uh, by the end of March. Uh, there's still a few more facilities to inspect. And so homeowners associations who are listening, uh, we will get to you. We will get those reports out to folks, but there's a few more that have locked gates we need to get access to and get that done. And as city manager pointed out, we're working real hard at this. Our maintenance crew is half staff and, uh, like I said, we get some locks to get through, but we'll get that done. So we also want to respond that we are up to speed on this. There will be a letter that we will issue to the Department of Ecology that fesses up and falls on our own sword about the things we have yet to do. That's entirely within the normal, uh, course of business with the Department of Ecology. And, uh, we've already clued them in that this is going to happen. So no surprises there, but want to let you know we're still working towards getting in full compliance as quick as we can. That's the end of report. Thanks.
Mike, just to point a clarification, you referenced inspecting the HOA ponds. That is because it's an obligation we have under our NPDS permit. It's not an obligation the city has to maintain those ponds.
Yes, thank you for clarifying that. That is on our website. It's on all kinds of things, but people get confused by that. So thank you for bringing that up, mayor, Mr. Mayor. Indeed, we are required to inspect all private and public ponds, vaults, stormwater facilities throughout the city every year under the permit. But it is up to the owner of those facilities to maintain them, whether it be a commercial business with something in a parking lot or an HOA that's got a pond or a vault. And so that sometimes gets confused. And that's part of the letters we'll send out this year to try to provide some, uh, educational material and clarify that because there have been some confusion. They've seen the person in the yellow coat from the city appear and they thought, oh, that means the city's going to do something. Well, the city is inspecting. The city's responsibility is to inspect, but the, uh, HOA in many cases is responsible for maintaining that. So that's what will be coming next. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Any further staff reports, Michael?
No, mayor. Thank you. That concludes our report.
Okay, that brings us to audience communication at the end of the meeting. Would anyone like to address the council? I see Barb's hand up. Name and address. You know the drill. Name and address. You know the drill.
Barb Heidel, fourteen oh one, one hundred forty-fourth place, southeast, Mill Creek. As far as I can see, as I see it, city expenses are a financial issue. I could be way off base on this, but it seems odd to me that the attorney gives a presentation on our city's legal costs. Seems to me, I could be wrong, but it should be the financial department or the financial director that does this. Some parts of the attorney's report were unable to be answered because they're financial issues that were brought up with the legal costs. I would have liked to have seen more detail as to how much has been spent in each legal category in the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. Would anyone else like to address the council tonight? Hearing none. We have no executive session this evening. So we will be adjourned and reconvene a week from tonight. See everyone on the thirteenth.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, everybody.
Everyone, take care.
Hey, Grant, if you're still there, I want to talk to you for one minute.